We'll call this meeting to order, please. Today's May 21st, 2019. This is the Santa Barbara City Council. We'll do our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Smedden. Mayor Pretem Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Mario.
Here. And we have a ceremonial item, Madam Clerk.
Item number one, subject National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2019.
Got our Public Works Department here. Very good. So, National Public Works Week is May 19th through the 25th, 2019, whereas Public Works Professionals are the behind-the-scenes employees who maintain infrastructure for the city from the airport to the waterfront, the streets, sidewalks, and bridges, water and wastewater systems, and much more. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara's infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided and maintained without the efforts of our Public Works Professionals. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara Public Works Department workforce is a diverse, hard-working group of dedicated first responders, including engineers, project managers, supervisors, lead workers, maintenance workers, mechanics, technicians, and operators, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's streets, creeks, wastewater treatment, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for the sustainability of Santa Barbara. And whereas Public Works is resolved to preserve and improve facilities and services initiated by prior generations, having more than $100 million of projects underway. And whereas the Public Works mission is to provide our community with a sustainable foundation to thrive by delivering quality services and public infrastructure through efficient and fiscally responsible practices. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kathy Mario, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th as National Public Works Week, and call upon all residents and civic organizations to recognize the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions made daily to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Nice. There you go.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Rebecca Bjark, Public Works Director. I've invited this particular group of employees up with me today to recognize them because they represent the past year's employees of the months for Public Works. It's always a hard choice for us to select one person per month because we have so many fantastic people working in our department. But our crew here, and it's a diverse crew from almost every division, represents this past year's employees, and they were recognized for going above and beyond in their jobs and doing more than what there is really entailed. Reflecting back to the proclamation, I just want to also take the time to thank our local citizens, and I think they do recognize the importance and value of Public Works, and that was certainly showed when they voted in favor of the Measure C sales tax, which we are now heavily investing in our streets, sidewalks, and other infrastructure. So, thank you to all of Santa Barbara for the support for our community.
Thanks so much. Thank you for that. And are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Casey?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll go to public comment. This is our opportunity to hear from the public regarding issues that are not on our formal agenda. Holly Perea is in the back, and she can make an appointment with us or find the right staff person to answer your questions, as we can't really get into conversations with you up here. Mark Marshall Wafford, you're going to be first. You get three minutes at the mic. It looks like he left temporarily, maybe. Phil Walker, you can go ahead and go first. And Michael Baker, after you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. You know, I had a close call on Milpus Street, just driving here, the flow of traffic is probably 35, 40 miles an hour. Here's a guy not in a crosswalk, not in a arterial, excuse me, crossing, going, walking across Milpus Street in that flow of traffic with his head buried in a cell. And, please, sir, please go to the, you know, a proper crossing if you're going to bury your head in a cell, but please don't do that, too. Okay. My wife's family home again was flooded March 10th, 1995, when Sycamore Creek overtopped down on the lower Canada Street area and even above that, and caused great damage and unfortunate loss of life with the retired judge that was killed. And he was in the Five Points, right above the Five Points area, and that flood wall blew through his house, and it was not good. But today, you know, the bridges are being rebuilt. I understand, talked to a couple of Lash staff yesterday, the Quinientos Bridge is going to be extended, the timeline out to the end of March now. So, it's a fairly deep canyon, and they have to do some pouring in place of the support structure, so it'll be nice when it's done. But my main concern is the riparian growth in Sycamore Creek from, let's say, Carpinteria Street, the bridge there, to the south, to the Punta Gorda Bridge area, and beyond that to the Freeway Bridge. It is growing on steroids, it's out of control, and something needs to be done because some people probably well know during the paint fire, even besides the flood impediment, flood flow impediment created by the riparian growth, you can have a riparian flame wall come down if the vegetation dries out to the point with a strong downstream wind, too. So, it's a concerns on both ends. So, County Flood Controls have a hearing about their flood control plans for essentially the creeks that's coming Thursday evening, and I'll express it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Baker, please.
Always want to look around for my dad when you say that, but that's another story. My name's Michael Baker, CEO, United Boys and Girls Club, Santa Barbara County. I wanted to first and foremost thank everybody for your continued support. We've made some really good progress, and I'm happy to report to you that tomorrow is the day. Tomorrow's the day that we have the ribbon cutting for the West Side Kitchen. It's been a long-time coming commercial kitchen on the West Side, many, many years in the planning, and finally, 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 tomorrow, we cut the ribbon at 4:00 at the West Side Club. If you can make it, hopefully you can all attend. We have reserved two parking spots, one for the City Manager and one for the Mayor, so hopefully you both can make it, get in and get out. I know you need to leave ahead of time. I got it, I got you, I promise you. So, that's going to happen at 4:00, and at 4:30, we're going to be presenting our gold cards to our kids that have achieved 105 days this calendar year at the West Side Club. So, encourage you all to attend, and those of you that can make it, love to have you there, get you a nice tour if you haven't seen the facility, but you are going to be blown away by this kitchen, absolutely blown away. And we're working with Nancy Weiss, who's the head of the Food Services Department, and if it wasn't for her, our kids wouldn't eat every night. We've actually dedicated the kitchen in her name, so that'll happen tomorrow as well.
Really? Nice.
Yeah, yeah, so that's going to happen tomorrow. And in addition to that, we're going to be having a culinary program that she's developing for our kids, so we'll have a free culinary school for the kids all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade. I really don't know what kindergartners are going to make, but we'll figure that out. We'll work on that. But again, I encourage you to come down tomorrow. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call at the office at 805-681-1315. Thanks for all your support.
Thanks so much. Mr. Wafford, your turn, come on up. We have your original slip. Yeah. Welcome.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to thank you guys again for the housing. I'm going tomorrow for a final update. Anyway, I was back in Ivy again. I picked up two, and I guess they were nice enough to leave half of a scooter down there as well. I've got 19 and a half now, and everything else seems to be organized pretty well. The trash pickup and the beaches are looking good, and just, you guys, thank you, and have a blessed day.
All right. Denise Spangler Adams and Anna Marie Gob will be the final speaker for public comment.
Good afternoon. Thank you again for all you do for the city. I wanted to share with you a couple things that have happened in the last week that were very exciting. We had the Secretary of Education here from Washington DC, which was a welcomed opportunity, albeit disappointing for some of us because of the positions of the federal government, which are different from some of us who are very strong supporters of public education. On that note, I wanted to address public education here locally again. As I've mentioned before, 55% of the students at Santa Barbara City College are from out of our district, many are out of state. That's an issue for the city. I noticed that you met last week with Santa Barbara Unified School District. I don't know when you meet with Santa Barbara City College, but I hope you'll address, what do the people of the city of Santa Barbara want? Do they want these 8,000 housing units for people who live here and work here, or to accommodate students coming into City College? I think there's some acknowledgement at this juncture of time that City College overbuilt in the 1980s, 1990s, because if over 8,000 students have to be imported from elsewhere to occupy our classes, there's some internal issues that I think they're going to start to look at through demographic studies. But I hope when you meet with them, you'll raise some of these issues and look at what you want for your district. I also wanted to mention that they had a very excellent speaker, Pedro Nogales, on equity inclusion, and I went to that. There was a demonstration outside. One of the trustees ran into some white supremacists outside of the Garban, and he said that we need to continue working to make politically, the whites politically irrelevant in our community. That's something to be aware of. It's unfortunate that it happened, but as an elected public official, at least at this level, I've always felt everybody's inclusive of everybody in our town, and that's very important to me. And so, last night, I wanted to share, I went to the Computer Academy Celebration at Santa Barbara High. It was so uplifting, about 220 people there. They went from nine years ago not having any computers, when my son graduated in 2010, to starting a computer academy, and the computer academy then went on and got national recognitions. And to see that about half the class were females as well as males, and that they were from all ethnic diversities, to me, it represented what the BAM program used to be, where all the kids came together, and it was a feast and a celebration, second to none, and that, to me, represents Santa Barbara. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Ms. Gott. Ms. Adams, Holly Perea in the back might be able to tell you when we meet with the City College trustees, if she can find out. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Yesterday, I attended the ABR meeting, and before that, I actually watched the last video from the last meeting and looked at the minutes. As usual, there was something wrong with the minutes. When I tried to have that rectified, staff didn't respond. I went to ABR, I spoke at public comment, ABR didn't respond. When the applicant actually had their time during the meeting, they illustrated perfectly the issue that I had. You see, the ABR had actually requested that two separate buildings have their roof lines changed. The minutes said that only one would. No one bothered to watch the video at staff, it was 9 minutes and 38 seconds. No one at the ABR bothered to read my letter or watch the video. No one stopped the ABR when I asked, you know, to have them review before actually making a final decision on the minutes. But again, like I said, the applicant's architect showed up with exactly what I said was going to be, you know, the actual motion from the last meeting. When I finally got up to public comment, and I again made that very same point, do you know what I heard from the ABR member? Well, I don't really think we need to redo the minutes because the applicant's here with the change. The Brown Act is not about something that actually happens, and you only get half of the information in a motion. That is your record, and your staff is ill-equipped to actually run a meeting. They don't even know how to run a meeting. They cannot even oftentimes agendize things properly. They are not managing the meetings. What happens is the staff member sits in a chair and waits until some sort of chaos starts, or people start having a problem. Then they might actually bump in with just a tiny bit of a suggestion, but they provide no real guidance, no real education, and the city's responsibility to those ABR members who you actually appointed is unbelievably disrespectful. It really is. Because you are letting them flounder while your staff does nothing, absolutely nothing, and you are going to raise appeals, the appeal fee, for people who are trying to make sure that we actually get the projects done right the first time.
Thank you.
And your staff is not doing your job, and they're getting paid for it.
Your time is up. And that closes public comment, and we will go to the consent calendar, please. Items to read, Madam Clerk.
Item number two, subject application to the State Office of Historic Preservation to certify the city's historic preservation program pursuant to the National Historic Preservation Act. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the filing of an application for certification under the certified local government program. Item number three, subject resolution of holding the appeal of 7-Eleven North Milpus LLC to reverse the Architectural Board of Review's decision to deny final design approval and deny the appeal of God and Fauder to uphold the decision of the Architectural Board of Review for 7-Eleven North Milpus. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara upholding the appeal of 7-Eleven North Milpus LLC to reverse the November 19th, 2018 decision of the Architectural Board of Review to deny final design approval and to deny the appeal of Anna Marie God and Herman Fauder to uphold the decision of the Architectural Board of Review to deny final design approval for the project at 7-Eleven North Milpus. Item number four, subject received of the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, Community Wildfire Prevention Grant. Recommendation, see that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection grant for the update of the City of Santa Barbara Community Wildfire Protection Plan and Programmatic Environmental Impact Report, accepting the terms of the grant to complete the project by March 2021, and directing staff to begin work when funding is received.
Okay. And we have a public request to pull item three. Ms. Smedden, I assume you wanted to vote separately on that one, too?
I do, and I also need to pull item four to recuse myself.
I was wondering about that. That's...
Madam Mayor.
Is that still the consent calendar?
It is.
Yes. Go ahead, you two.
Yes, although I did want to comment that this is an extraordinarily cautious recusal for both Councilmembers, Smedden and myself.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll take them in order then, so we'll go to number three, which was upholding the appeal of 7-Eleven North Milpus. Ms. Gott, come on up and speak, and Ms. Govani is going to give you two minutes, so you have five.
Madam Mayor, I need to give the council some advice. You will recall that your rules of procedure don't allow ex parte contacts after the public hearings closed. And the reason for that rule is once the public hearing's closed, there's no way for the other side, as it were, to unring the bell of whatever you were told. So, it's perfectly appropriate that people speak to you today, but I'm in the uncomfortable position of needing to admonish you that any new evidence today can't be taken into account in your action unless you want to notice and reopen the hearing, which we haven't planned for.
Okay, so we can hear what is being said, but it shouldn't influence the vote that we're going to take.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Unless you want to renotice the hearing. So, roughly a generation ago, the city actually implemented Chapter 28, and for roughly a generation, we have had the same two issues, which is the issue regarding the extension and times. None of that has changed, even in the most recent update of 2010. It was still two years, you still had to get a building permit, or you had to ask for an extension, pay for it, and have a hearing, and get that approved. None of those things happened with 7-Eleven North Milpus. The applicant hired someone, and they forgot to actually extend the modification. It was not staff's fault to actually go ahead and notice anyone. It was the applicant, and they received proper notice when they received the modification, even though that modification, as I have said again and again, was not granted properly. I wanted to point to you a number of issues with the resolution. The resolution talks about tolling, and it also says that you are going to be, you are going to have the date as of June 21st, 2019. Well, did you know that your current Chapter 30 does not extend the date of a modification to the date of three years from the project design approval? They are two separate dates. So, how you are actually tolling does not seem to even resonate properly with Chapter 30, which is what you just actually passed last year. If you actually look on the first page, it says multiple land use approvals, and then below it, it says from date of final action of the city on the longest discretionary permit or approval related to the application, except design review approval shall not operate to extend any other discretionary permit or approval. That's a problem. There's also other problems. The quasi-judicial hearing, we had Councilmember Gutierrez, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Rouse using their phones while they were sitting up here during public comment, listening to the public. We had Mayor Mario, Councilmember Harmon, and Gutierrez leaving the meeting. You did not provide us with due process. Mayor Mario prohibited two ABR members from speaking. That is not providing due process to the public. There are other issues with this resolutions. Comments are actually in this resolutions, and comments only are not a determination, but yet that's what the resolution says. The resolution also says another, a few of the other things, which are basically that staff has authority to extend a ti, something that had an expired date. That doesn't exist anywhere in our ordinances. There are numerous issues with this resolution. The appeal I filed, for instance, I provided in advance of the meeting, and not one issue was brought up by the city attorney, staff, or you during the meeting, if you even read it, which I don't believe most of you did. So, staff and city council did not examine all of the evidence. I am concerned also about the public notice, because no one noticed that a right-of-way was going to be turned into the entrance to a commercial parking space. That seems kind of odd. What also is really odd is that you did not actually deny the appeal based on our ordinances, but based on political pressure and something that was fake. It was something that was made up, and if you look in our current ordinances, it does not even apply. Their expiration date was April 27th. This now says their expiration date is June 21. It makes no sense. Much of the information in here, at best, at very best, it is misrepresenting some of the information that is in the record. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. So, on item three, Mr. Friedman, a motion from you, perhaps?
I'll move the item as per the staff report.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Rouse. Any discussion, Mr. Dominguez, comments from you?
I have a couple of questions for the city attorney. This is regarding the resolution and a couple of the whereas's. So, the last one on page three, whereas neither city staff nor the owner were aware that the front yard modification had reached the two-year mark at the time of that event. What exactly is the purpose of that? And I'm not sure I understand what that means, that no one knew that it had reached the end of the two-year mark.
I think it's just a statement of fact. The whereas clauses in a resolution like this serve to state the facts as the council sees them, and that statement is factually correct as, and Ms. Kennedy is here if you would like to confirm that.
So, and really what the vote does today is make us, this resolution establishes that fact, no matter what the evidence was, this now makes it the found fact by this fact-finding body?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, yes and no. It is a found fact, but in court, it must still be supported by some substantial evidence.
Okay, and that's kind of what I wanted to get to, because I'm not going to nitpick these if it doesn't matter, but how is it that the city didn't know that a modification had reached a two-year mark? Isn't it just two years from the day the modification is issued? I'm not sure how we could ever establish that fact.
I believe that reference is meant to explain why processing continued after that date. And again, my recollection is that when staff realized the issue in, I believe, September, it then by email announced its intention to extend that time.
Okay, so it's not really literal that they weren't able to ascertain and know that that fact was true, that it was two years, they just acted as if it wasn't true, or something of that sort?
Yeah, it's a knowable fact, but the staff who were involved were unaware of it at that time.
Okay. The other two I am concerned about, whereas on May 17th, this is the fifth one down, requested a determination regarding, and it gets into the square feet, same thing with May 25th, proposed change in use in square footage. At our quasi-judicial hearing, I asked questions related to the square footage and never seemed to get a clear answer. There were several different square footages on different plans provided by applicant and appellant and city. So, these would seem to clear that up, even though it wasn't necessarily cleared up at the hearing?
It's my understanding that the staff in preparing this resolution have gone back and confirmed those numbers. So, we believe these to be supportable by a specific reference in the record of proceedings.
Okay, so it didn't have to necessarily come up orally at that judicial, quasi-judicial... Okay, so it didn't have to necessarily come up orally at that judicial, quasi-judicial hearing?
That's absolutely correct, Councilmember Dominguez. Your written record is also something that can be drawn upon in making findings.
Okay. And then the third question is related to an omission. There was testimony that this went to the planning commission, and five of the planning commissioners said that the design should be changed, so that's not mentioned in here. So we're not required to list all the facts, just the ones that support the finding of the body? Is that how it works out?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, that's correct. In a substantial evidence standard, when we get to court, the judge does not have the authority to reweigh the evidence. So if there is any substantial evidence for your, to support your findings, the court is obligated to defer to that judgment. We saw that recently in the Felkay case, where the council had to make some difficult findings about a house on a bluff face.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. We have a motion and a second. This is on item three.
Councilmember Dominguez?
No.
Mayor Pretend Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Hi.
Councilmember Sneddon?
No.
Mayor Murillo?
Aye. That passes five to two. Very good. We'll move on to four. That's the receipt of this grant for our community wildfire, our plan. And will someone make a motion, please?
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
That was Harmon and Rouse?
One of those.
Okay.
What is it?
It's to accept that money for our wildfire plan, right?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll take a roll call, please.
Mayor Pretend Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Hi.
Councilmember Sneddon?
I'm recused.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Murillo?
Aye. Okay, six with a recusal. Okay, we'll wait for the reading if there's no further objection, and I need a motion to move the rest of the consent calendar. Dominguez, Rouse, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good stuff. We move on to a report from the Finance Committee. Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee recommended to council, who will hear this in a few weeks, to refinance the Rancheria Village Apartments with an extension of the affordability from 2069 to 2104, 25-year extension, and to bring in a new partner, CHANCE, which is the Coalition for Housing, Accessibility Needs, Choices, and Equality. We also took a look at some modifications to the recommended budget and recommended those to the full council as well. And we looked at some outside funding sources, and we recommended the Van Gogh Project, which the Museum of Art is sponsoring.
Understood. Very good. Thank you for your report. We'll move on to item 10, Madam Clerk.
Item number 10, Subject Wastewater Collection System Annual Report.
I'm looking forward to this, right? If this system isn't working, nothing else is, right? Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Galen Fair. I'm the Acting Wastewater System Manager, and I have with me Bradley Rare, who is our Wastewater Collection System Superintendent. And today, we're going to present to you the Wastewater Collection System Annual Report.
Thank you.
Today, I'm going to talk about some background information on the sewer system, as well as the consent decree, give you a history of our SSO, or sewer system overflows, talk about our sewer system maintenance programs, as well as our capital improvement programs, some other notable achievements for 2018, as well as the costs associated with the consent decree. So you can see, this is our collection system staff, standing under our newly unveiled El Estero Wastewater Resource Center sign. Some information about our collection system, we have 257 miles of sewer main, which is depicted by the green lines on the map up there. Ninety percent of our system is six-inch or eight-inch pipes, so majority of our system are smaller diameter, and we have about a 55 average age of our system. Majority of the sewer system is gravity-fed, however, we do have seven lift stations strategically placed throughout the city. Those are depicted by the red dots on the map, and those lift stations pump wastewater up through four spains, so we have two miles of four spain in the city, up to a part of the city where it can then be gravity-fed down to El Estero Water Resource Center, which is depicted by the orange dot. So here is a look at the past of our sewer system overflows since 2008. In the years prior to the consent decree, we had a large number of spills. We had an average of about 38 from 2008 to 2011. In 2011, the city hired a consultant to help us get a handle on these overflows. Additionally, in 2011, channel keepers filed suit, so, and in 2012, we entered into the consent decree. The consent decree focused primarily on the development of maintenance management system to improve our performance. Additionally, we enhanced our capital infrastructure rehabilitation, and we developed, the consent decree developed some SSO reduction standard for continued improvement of our system. The ultimate goal of the consent decree was to reduce spills and protect our environment. Since 2012, when the consent decree started, we have had an average of about 13 spills, which is quite a reduction from 38. You'll note in 2017, there's a little green bar on top of the other one, that was, we had 13 spills, however, three of those were related to storms, 10-year, 24-hour storms, so they are not counted toward our SSO reduction performance standard. In 2018, we had seven spills, which was below our SSO reduction performance standard of Here is our seven spills and how they are categorized. We had two caused by debris, and five were caused by roots. And one thing to note is that all five of those spills caused by roots were from, roots from a lateral. So this is why our slip program is very important. Here's a history of the SSO volume not recovered. That's actually, there is a typo on the 2018 bar graph. It's actually 1,600 that were not recovered. That was our total volume spilled in 2018. So you can see that about 70%, 77% I believe, was recovered and returned back to the sewer I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rare for our sewer system maintenance programs, and he's going to walk you through the four different programs we have: cleaning program, fog management, sewer lateral inspection program, and acoustic program.
All right, thank you. So as Galen said, we have four main cleaning, our maintenance programs that my staff are responsible for implementing as part of our management of the sewer system. So first, I think it's important to highlight some milestones we've had since entering into the consent decree. In 2017, unfortunately, we did not reach our spill performance standard, and one of the conditions we have in that is to produce a sanitary sewer overflow reduction action plan. And so 2018 was about trying to implement some of those measures, and two of those measures that we successfully implemented in 2018 were, we, one, adjusted the small diameter pipe from their 60-month cleaning frequency down to 36-month as a maximum. And so that's that first bubble under 2018. And we also added two additional cleaning frequencies to better match what we believe is the appropriate cleaning frequency. One of them is our two-month, what we call accelerated cleaning pipe, and then our 36-month chemical root control to better match industry standards for chemical programs, that I'll talk about a little bit later. And then our third accomplishment in 2018, as it pertains to cleaning program milestones, is we implemented mid-year, implemented our hybrid basin cleaning, and our sewer system is broken up into what we call sewer basins or sewer sheds, kind of like a watershed. And what that means is it's geographically focused, and so that was, that was something we felt, if we could continue doing our just-in-time cleaning for the more high-frequency cleanings, but take advantage of the more geographic cleaning approaches for the longer duration, the 12, 24, and 36, we could improve efficiencies, and I think I'll be able to show you that to you in some of the future slides. And then also, because of the adjusting our six- and eight-inch pipe down to 36 months as a maximum frequency, we also implemented an on-call cleaning contract for where we have a contractor mobilized quarterly to help my staff augment the cleaning services. So as Galen highlighted, the collection system map, our system is 257 miles, which it pertains to, or equates to about 6,200 sewer mains. Those sewer mains are broken up into four distinct cleaning programs. We have our system-wide cleaning program, which is our longer-duration sewer mains. We've got 36-month for our six and eight, and then 60-month cleaning for all the rest of the larger diameter ones. We also have our accelerated cleaning program, so at about 19% of the sewer mains, those are mains that in the past have been cleaned, and we've returned findings that don't support letting them go to a 36- or 60-month frequency. We also have our accelerated root control program. That was a new program that was introduced in 2017 in order to help us prevent root-related sanitary sewer spills. And over the last year, we've really done a great job, I think, of identifying more sewer mains that probably had root problems than we ever thought before, and so that number, that percentage of our system is somewhere around 39%. And then last but not least, we also have our chemical root control program. And this program, our pipes are treated using a root inhibitor the first year, and then basically can help defer maintenance for those, because it will stop the root growth on the pipe. And so another look at our system is our frequencies, and this just kind of gives you a percentage, or a breakdown of the different frequencies and how much of our system is being cleaned at a very aggressive rate between one month and 12 months. So when we talk about performance, we talk about metrics, one of the cleaning metrics we use is what we call total mileage of cleaning. And so this graphic shows the amount of cleaning miles since 2012. As you can see, it has consistently grown over the last seven years since we entered in the consent decree, and so in 2018, we cleaned 308 miles. That's a combination of city forces as well as that on-call cleaning contractor. The other way to look at cleaning mileage is also to look at the percentage of the system. So how many pipes in our system have we cleaned in the last calendar year? And so these are, these are numbers that identify how many unique pipes in the system were cleaned, and I'm happy to report that in 2018, we cleaned the most we've ever cleaned before at 186.5 miles, and that, that equates to roughly 73% of our system, or 4,500 individual sewer mains. And I think a large portion of this, this increase was due to the conversion from 60-month down to 36-month mains for the smaller diameter. So in 2014, we started applying a chemical root, we founded the chemical root control program, and we started applying chemical to some of the sewer mains that have had a history of root problems. And initially, as you can see, in 2014 and in 2016, we, we treated 16.5 miles, and that's because the first year you treat it, you wait and go back two years later and treat the, treat the same pipe. In 2015, we saw, we saw an increase because of the amount of pipe that was coming back with roots. However, since 2016, you'll see that it's declined slightly, and there's really two main reasons for that. One, we have spent a significant amount of money and resources on our capital program, and it's really not effective to treat lined sewer mains with chemical. And two, as we are bringing up our sewer mains to a more aggressive frequency, once they get to a point where we're cleaning them every so often, to the, every one, two, or four months, it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to be treating them with chemicals, because you're taking care of them, you're taking care of the problem a different So another element of our maintenance program is our acoustic sounding program, and the city first purchased the Sewer Line Rapid Assessment Tool, or SL RAT, system in 2014. And as a reminder, what this does is it's, it's basically two units, one goes on one side, one end of the pipe, the other one goes on the other, and it's kind of a speaker-receiver combination. And so that, or that yellow device that's straddling a manhole, one will transmit a sound, and the other one's listening for that sound, and depending on how much sound and what sounds it hears, it kicks out a score from zero to 10. 10 being fairly open, zero being potentially blocked, and we need to divert resources to look into that further. The diagnostic tool, diagnostic tool is really set up for six-to-12-inch pipe, and we've been, we've been performing tests on these, on a series of pipes since 2014. And the test takes about three minutes and saves resources such as water and staff time, where you're not having to spend as much time as you would cleaning it if there, if cleaning's not warranted. So to show you the results, in 2017, we took a, we took a year off where we were focusing on a lot of other elements of our preventive maintenance programs, but in 2018, we conducted 1,950 tests, which totals about 89, 86.9% of our, not percent, sorry, miles of our system. And so what we, what we decided to do in 2018 is we actually made this a complementary program to our hybrid basin cleaning program, where we will go out and test the pipes that aren't scheduled to be, scheduled to be cleaned this year. And so this 86.9% or miles of the system are pipes that inevitably would not have been looked at in last year, and we believe that this is a valuable use of city staff time, but also helps catch pipes that maybe our cleaning findings have not done us justice. So to put it kind of all in perspective, this graph is going to show a few things. The light blue is our geographic cleaning miles, our dark, the dark blue is our total cleaning miles, the green is the chemical root control miles that are applied since 2014, and then the red line is the number of SSO events we've had since, since the beginning of the consent decree. These are specifically root-related SSOs, and since the beginning, we, of the consent decree, we've had 46 SSO events, and that constitutes about 50% of our overall, all of our spills since 2012. You can see, though, that as, as we started to do more and more cleaning and more chemical root control, our spills declined since 2014, and as Galen indicated in her initial slide on our spill analysis from last year, we had five root-related spills due to roots at So to look at the same graph, but look for, at the debris-related SSOs, we've had, we've had 11 SSOs since 2012, and that equates to about 12% of our overall spills. You know, debris-related spills continue to pose problems for us, because there are things like wipes and other debris in the system that's very hard to prevent. From a maintenance standpoint, it's more of a public education and outreach element. But again, these, these spills are relatively minimal in comparison to our root-related So this is one of my favorite photos. This is fog in a sewer main, and as you can see, it starts to reduce the capacity of that sewer main, if not regu, if not prevented from reaching the sewer system. So in 2014, we revamped our fog program with some consultant support, and we hired a new wastewater compliance specialist focusing on fog.
It's fat, oil, and grease, right? Did you say that?
Yes.
Okay.
I did not say that, but it is fats, oils, and grease. And as a result, the number of fog inspections, or site visits to food service establishments within Santa Barbara has nearly tripled, and as you can see, the impact to our fog-related SSOs has gone from two, four, down to- And as you can see, the impact to our fog-related SSOs has gone from two, four, down to zero, one, one, and zero. So we, we believe there's been a huge impact to getting out and getting, getting one of our city staff in some of these food service establishments to work cooperatively with our restaurant operators. And so last but not least is our sewer lateral inspection program. And this picture on the left is a, is a picture taken from within one of our sewer mains that is actually lined. So we've made the capital investment on the, on the city, on the public infrastructure side to eliminate roots at joints. But this is a picture of roots coming in at the lateral connection, and we, we see this far too often. So our sewer lateral inspection program started and kind of was revamped and was kicked off in about 2013, focusing mainly on the commercial, industrial, and condominium complexes in town, with the goal of inspecting the entire population of those between 2013 and 2023, over about 10 years. So you can see in 2014, the number of letters was 566, but consistently over the last five years have gone up to the point where we, we issued 805 letters last year for sewer lateral inspection program cases. The majority of the letters, like I said at the beginning, started out with commercial, industrial, but now we're getting to the point where we've identified several, several cases that are on residential properties. And so the process works by sending out the initial letter, having an inspection done, and ultimately that returns, or what's returned to the property owner after they've turned in a video, is a letter that indicates repairs. And in 2018, we had 395 connections that were replaced, as well as 531 repairs. And I, I just want to take this opportunity to say that we've been working with the public cooperatively for the last few years, and we really appreciate the investment that they're making in their infrastructure. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Galen to talk about our condition assessment and capital program.
I missed your name, sir. What is it?
My name is Bradley Rare, and I'm the Wastewater Collection System Superintendent.
Bradley Rare?
Rare.
R-A-R-E?
R-A-H-R-E-R.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rare before we move on to the next section? Okay, good. Ms. Fair.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk about the Condition Assessment and Capital Program, and that's mostly our CCTV and our rehab, repair, or replacement of our capital infrastructure. So in 2018, this is our CCTV results. We have about 32 miles of main that we inspected. I do want to note that about 13 miles of those 32 miles were with the help of a contractor. So the left score, the column on the left, is the P A P, I do that every time, P A C P score, which is the Pipeline Assessment Certification Program. And it's a standardized coding program that documents the structural integrity or failure of a pipe. Five is your worst-conditioned pipe, and zero would be your best-conditioned pipe. So although it looks like the majority of the pipes that were videoed are, have some structural defects, what I do want to note is that in response to comments, Channel Keeper comments from our 2018 SSO Reduction Action Plan, the city actually contracted with a consultant specializing in asset management and condition assessment to evaluate all of our P A C P, P A C P grade-five pipes. So the result of that analysis showed that 5.1 miles of the 8.3 PACP5s are already included on a capital rehab program. So that's either going to be FY '18, '19, or '20. So we're in the process of getting those repaired and rehabilitated. And this is a history of our annual mileage completed. You will see that in 2017, 2018, it dropped. So that was part of the 2016 Consent Degree Amendment. If you recall, prior to the amendment, we had a requirement of 2.56 miles of main and two miles of high-risk pipe. So with the 2016 amendment, we eliminated the two miles of high-risk pipe, but we added back in a mile. So essentially, we reduced our required mileage for repair rehab by one. So in 2018, we had 3.7 miles completed. So we're plugging along. Average of almost five miles over the last several years. So some other notable activities in 2018. In 2017, as Bradley had mentioned, staff spent significant time doing other things. This was that other thing. It was implementing and developing workflows to transition to a new web-based computerized maintenance management system. So that, that system is Cartograph OMS. It is, like I said, web-based. It allows us to use mobile hardware. So you'll see there, we have one of our collection staff out in the field with an iPad, and he is updating data at, at the time of inspection or cleaning. So it's really helped us with staff time. Previous to this Cartograph OMS upgrade, we have a scheduler, we had a scheduler planner preparing paper packets and giving those to our staff to go out in the field knowing which pipes to clean. This system has eliminated that need for paper packets and the time to put together the packets. So it's been a great improvement to our workflow. Next, we had our SSMP recertified in 2018. So we had an audit in 2000, we had an audit in 2018, and it was recertified in January of 2019. The SSMP, which is the Sewer System Management Plan, is required to be recertified every five years. So the last time it was certified, we've done significant updates to our program. The major ones are the 2016 Consent Decree Amendment. We wanted to reflect all the changes from that. Additionally, in 2017, we had a reorganization to our staff, our collection system staff. So we wanted to reflect the new positions or the reorganization of existing positions. The 2018 SSO Reduction Plan had also adjusted workflows, which we wanted to reflect. And lastly, we need to update the work processes that were a result of the conversion to Cartograph And then lastly, we have been focusing a lot on our enhanced public outreach program. We've done, we've made a lot of improvements. We've been focusing heavily on SLIP, our Sewer Lateral Inspection Program, developing handout materials for our customers, get the public messaging out. It's, we're really trying to get the message out that sewer lateral maintenance is a very important thing for homeowners to, to know about and recognize that they, they need to do that. We like to call it a spring cleaning of your sewer lateral this time of year, and kind of, nobody thinks about it. So if you put it in the context of spring cleaning, you can start thinking about that. We also have made significant updates to our website, a lot on our Sewer Lateral Inspection Program page, as well as the Wastewater Collection System page. And then lastly, here are our costs for the consent decree, excuse me. In 2018, we had $6,000,000, almost, put towards our collection system maintenance and capital. And our expenditure cap, as per the consent decree, was just over $6 million, so we're about $600,000 over that cap that we're putting towards our, our maintenance. So that concludes the presentation, and we will take questions.
Thanks so much, Ms. Fair. It looks like Ms. Sneddon's ready to go with questions.
I do. Are we, is there a public comment on this item as well?
We have a public commenter, so go ahead. Questions please.
Okay, so state of questions first. Actually, a lot of minor comments, too. Could you talk about the integration with the SLIP maintenance program and residential roads? I know you've done a lot of preliminary work. I really have to commend you. Here's a comment I just have to make, that in this, in this last iteration of the SLIP program, you've been so responsive to the letters we've gotten from the public, and I think it's, you know, when we hear that acoustic sounding, it strikes a sense of dread and fear in a neighborhood of who's going to be noticed next. And I think you've been, it hasn't really gotten to the public yet, how, how it will affect them and what they can do. But could you just, at this point, talk about the integration or possible future integration when you're having residential paving and SLIP program in a neighborhood?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, we have really thrown a lot of resources and time because we understand that it's alarming when a customer gets a, a letter and there is a requirement that they must inspect, and then they, they receive a follow-up letter that there's a requirement that they must repair. And we understand how confusing and upsetting that can be, especially when sometimes those come with a price tag of about $10,000 to $20,000. So we have developed, or we're working to develop, some cost control measures that hopefully we will be able to give a baseline to the customers, that this is what it would cost to get something inspected, or this is what it's going to cost to have a certain portion of your lateral repaired. Because we understand that that is very, one, expensive and difficult to coordinate. One of the biggest items that we're finding customers are having difficulty with is the lateral connection, which is in the right-of-way. So what we have developed is we have a contract with a local contractor, which is up for renewal, and we are going to add a couple items to that. So currently, the way it exists, a customer will contact a plumbing contractor, they will dig a pit in the right-of-way, they will obtain a city permit, then go dig a pit in the right-of-way, and our contractor will come in and replace the connection. Then if there are any additional repairs that need to be completed, the plumbing contractor will do that, and then fill in the pit, and the job is done. However, that seems to be a little, that's a lot to, for one person to think about. So what we're adding to this contract, this bid, is going to be have our city contractor dig the pit, do the repair, and fill in the hole. So it makes it a little bit more streamlined for the homeowner. And we're looking at notifying customers before, once we know there is a sewer line that's going to be on part of our capital program, notifying them ahead of time and saying, hey, you've got two years, this is coming down the pike. And hopefully with that advanced notification and this new bid item, that, that will really help the customer feel not so lost in the process. And of course, our staff is always here to help. That's part of the reason we're doing the enhanced communication. We've updated our website with more time slots for people to talk to us and information about that.
Thank you. And then, did you say there were zero fog spills this year? And then what do you attribute that to? I mean, another, commend you on your Earth Day outreach and really educating people on what fog does in their system, and also wipes and different things. But, but that's pretty remarkable to have zero, and I was just wondering what you attribute that to.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, we really appreciate the acknowledgement, and that is correct. We did not have a fog-related spill in 2018. And like I stated in the presentation, it really comes down to that public outreach and working hand-in-hand with our, potentially our biggest grease contributors, which would be a restaurant or food service establishment. That last little bit of the fog program that's hard to get to is our residential population, and that's where Earth Day and some of these other public outreach events that we're going to be working to get out to more will help with that other part.
Thank you.
I don't see any other lights, and I know you're on the Water, you're the Water Commission Liaison, and I caught a snippet of that. That was a good discussion pretty recently, so thanks for those good questions. We'll go to public comment, and Ms. Kira Redman is here from Santa Barbara, Channel Keeper. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Kira Redman with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the 2018 Wastewater Collection System Annual Report. Channel Keeper has reviewed the report, and we're very pleased to see that the city met the 2018 sewage spill reduction performance standard laid out in our consent decree. We applaud the city for its continued efforts to improve sewer pipe cleaning, condition assessment, and spill response and reporting protocols, to further reduce sewage spills, and to repair or replace more than 1% of the city's sewer pipes per year. Channel Keeper hopes that this more proactive capital improvement program will continue beyond the termination of our amended consent decree next year, as we believe the city needs to be upgrading its system faster than your prior policy of 1% per year if it is to succeed in addressing the problems associated with its aging sewer infrastructure. It was noted before that nearly 32 miles of the sewer pipes that were inspected via CCTV in 2018, 16% of them had a PACP score of five or four, which shows that much of the city's system is still in an advanced state of deterioration and in urgent need of repair or replacement. We also note with concern the significant recent uptick in problems associated with the network of privately-owned sewer laterals underlying the city. Laterals that are old, poorly maintained, or damaged can cause blockages and spills, both in the laterals as well as in the city-owned sewer mains. So if the city is to continue its good progress toward reducing spills for which it is responsible and legally liable, the widespread problem of failing laterals will need to be addressed. We know your staff is working hard to tackle this issue, and we have offered and will be happy to provide our support and assistance to help, including by doing outreach and educating our constituents about the responsibility and importance of inspecting and maintaining private laterals in good condition to help reduce spills. I know you will be looking at funding for the Sewer Lateral Inspection Program during your upcoming budget hearings, and I urge you to allocate sufficient resources to support a robust program that can effectively address this substantial problem. The city ordinance that lays out the conditions under which laterals must be inspected and repaired also needs to be strengthened, and Channel Keeper will be here to support that effort when it becomes, comes before you as well. In conclusion, Channel Keeper commends the city for its success to date in reducing sewage spills, which pollute our water, threaten public health, and harm aquatic life in our tourist economy. And we encourage you to continue the heightened investment in maintaining this critical infrastructure to get ahead of its deterioration. Channel Keeper thanks you and looks forward to working with the city towards cleaner beaches and creeks.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Redman. Are there any comments? We are just receiving this report, and I know that when we have our Public Works presentation next week, we may hear more about this system. Mr. Dominguez.
The, the one thing I would bring up, and I'll bring it up again during the Public Works session, is just the SLIP program. I continue to hear concerns from residents. I hope we're still fine-tuning, tuning that. I know you guys have been working really hard on that, but I think there's still some, some ways to go again because of the nature of the construction and repairs, because of how it's integrated with other city public works projects. But I think we need to keep fine-tuning and pushing until we get a higher degree of understanding of what we can do to make it a smoother process. But this is great news. If we can get that seven down to three and a half, that would be better. So keep doing the great work.
Very, very good. Thank you. Yeah, good news, and we can always be working harder, so protect our environment. Thank you so much. We'll close this item. And number 11 is what? Ms. Estrada?
Item number 11, subject renewal of levy for fiscal year 2020 for the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to continue vegetation road clearance, implementation of a defensible space inspection and assistance program, and implementation of a vegetation management program within the foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be of more than general or ordinary benefit, and describing the district to be assessed to pay the costs and expenses thereof, approving the engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering continuation of the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District for fiscal year 2019 to 2020.
Councilmember Sneddon, you have a statement, please.
I do. I need to recuse myself on this item, and I'll be back.
Okay. And our city attorney had to do the same, as he lives in the assessment area. Ms. Connect, welcome. So we're ready to go with Mr. Pore.
Madam Mayor, Chief Nicol and I are here in support only.
Okay.
We're here to support the team that's going to present this to you today. And as you know, a lot of our, our projects, like this wildland fire plan, the CWPP, and the Assessment District, are all long-term, many-years-in-the-making projects. And looking years into the future, we've decided that we want to, to present it with a team that we'll be looking at in the next few years as this project is renewed. So the shepherding of this project has been turned over to Jim Austin, who many of you know. He's the acting fire marshal in my absence. And he- Fire Marshal in my absence. And he will be taking this project forward into the future. So without any further comment from me, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and I'll just be out there in support.
Is that Fire Marshal Austin?
Not quite yet.
Oh, not yet?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, today we're here before you to present the annual renewal of the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District. And along with Chief Nickel and Fire Marshal Porey, I have to my right here a newly-promoted wildfire, uh, wildland fire, sorry, wildland fire specialist. And then also behind me is John Bliss, the engineer from SEI who prepared the report. And then our presenter today will be Chris Braden, Fire Service Specialist. And with that, I will turn it over to him.
Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Madam Mayor, members of the city councils, my pleasure to be here today to present and promote the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District. And today I'll just be going over our programs, the projects we completed in fiscal year 2019, and also what we have going into fiscal year 2020. So the, the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District was established in 2006 with an annual renewal process, which is where we are today. And as we move into the 13th year, we really look forward to being able to continue those services that improve homeowner safety and then reduce the overall, reduce the potential loss in a wildfire event. So this is a map just showing the Assessment District area. You can see the two, the two high-fire hazard areas that make up the Assessment District. Those are the foothill and the extreme foothill zones. The primary difference between these two zones is 100-foot defensible space requirement in the foothill zone, and then that bumps out to 150-foot defensible space requirement in the extreme foothill zone. That's kind of the darker shaded areas to the northern part of the map. And the area where Highway 192 is in the middle, the grayed area, that's Mission Canyon, that's part of county, so that's not included inside of our Assessment District area. So the four primary services that are in the Assessment District are Vegetation Road Clearance Program, and that's, that's conducted from September through January each year, Defensible Space Assistance, which includes voluntary defensible space evaluations, and also our chipping services that are ongoing from March through June. So we're kind of in the middle of wrapping up that program for fiscal year 2019. And then finally, Vegetation Management. And Vegetation Management is conducted in the Vegetation Management Units that were outlined in our 2004 City of Santa Barbara Wildland Fire Plan. So the first, so the first program we'll be going over is our Vegetation Road Clearance Program. And each year, we clear approximately 14 miles of roads inside the Assessment District. And this service is really important for us because it increases the response time and ingress of first responders in an emergency situation, while also improving the egress of homeowners during an evacuation that we may see during a wildfire. So as you can see in this picture, things like overgrown or dead vegetation, or hedges on the road raised, we want to make sure we're pushing those back. Fire hydrants that may have gotten a little bit overgrown with just that unmaintained vegetation that a lot of the times homeowners won't kind of get out to those areas that are right down on the road. And then also raising things like canopies that may be kind of getting a little bit too down on the roadway. So with vegetation, we're pushing that back about 10 feet horizontally off roadways. And then for things like lower-hanging canopies, we're raising those up to about 13 and a half feet off the ground to make sure that our engine and apparatus have the ability to get in there without running into anything that they don't want to. So these are some before and after examples of-
I'm going to interrupt you.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry for interrupting. So do you yourselves do that, or do you contract somebody to clear that out?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, so we contract out with road clearance crews every single year. So we put that out to bid, and then contractors are allowed to bid on that work. So we don't have any in-house crews that we're using with that type of work. It is contracted, but I do work personally with those crews on a daily basis where we look at those homes. In fact, that kind of leads into this slide a little bit, where we essentially always make sure that we try and contact homeowners as much as possible and, and get in touch with them and make sure they understand the work that we're doing. So I hope that answers your question.
So does that fall under, in the budget that we reviewed earlier in the week, does that fall under the special projects item line?
I'll refer to that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, Eric Nickel, Fire Chief. If you recall, when we presented our budget yesterday, that was the second of the three funds, and that's the wildfire assessment fund. And within that fund, that is the very last line of that, the special projects. So the direct money that goes towards paying the contractors to remove that vegetation.
So, does the property owner pay for any of that?
Well, they do through the, the Assessment District.
Okay.
That's the-
They pay the assessment every year.
Correct.
And then that's what pays for it.
Correct. Thank you. We'll, we'll be getting to that here fairly shortly.
But since we're on that subject, Mr. Casey, is there a possibility of using our, not our urban forestry people wouldn't, that wouldn't, this isn't their work, or Streets Division, I just, I hate contracting out, you know that. So-
Yes, Madam Mayor, but they've, they've got a full load as it is, and priorities. So this is an efficient way of using the assessment money to get at special clearings.
Thanks. Mr. Braden, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, these pictures show a couple examples of our Vegetation Road Clearance Program. Certain circumstances, we have hedges in areas of the roadway that have gotten really overgrown and, and, you know, for one reason or another, just haven't gotten the maintenance and the TLC that they deserve. So what we do, and what I do when I'm out working with our road clearance program, I always try to make contact with homeowners to make sure that they understand the importance of our road clearance work. And also, when we're working with them, we want to make sure we're paying attention to things like screening and privacy. So after we do the work, they understand why it was done, and also being able to maintain it in the future. And in both of these examples, I was able to make contact with the homeowners. We, our crews removed a lot of that dead material, but the homeowners who, in both of these cases, were new to the area, they took it upon themselves to actually increase that clearance, to really kind of think about the long-term strategy of the hedges that are around their properties. And then they went in and planted water-wise and fire-wise landscaping afterwards. So just a really good success story, I think, of, of just us being able to work with the community, and then being really responsive to the work we're doing, and then taking that and running with it, I think was really good. So the next program that I'll talk about is defensible space evaluations. So we provide defensible space evaluations to all homeowners within the Assessment District every year. They're able to call us up any time of the year, and we're happy to come out and take a walk around their property. It's a really good way for us to work one-on-one with homeowners, look at things like hardening structures, and then also discuss strategies that we're able to improve their landscape, and then reduce the overall impacts that they may incur during a wildfire. So looking at things like leaf litter on the roof that may come down into the gutters, making sure that's cleaned out, looking at vents, crawl spaces, things like that, making sure they have proper screening, and then also just the landscape itself, looking at fire-wise, water-wise landscaping, proper spacing of vegetation, and just making sure that they're really doing the best that they can on their property to make it hardened and defensible in a wildfire event. So the third program we'll talk about is our chipping service. So I think once homeowners have a better understanding of that defensible space, they can take advantage of our chipping service, which is offered once a year to all homeowners in the Assessment District. So the service is a really good way to incentivize homeowners to kind of maintain that defensible space. So it's part of their annual defensible space clearance. A lot of the times, the disposal of that vegetation can be rather costly. So this is a really great, great way for them to kind of save some money, put their vegetation out on the road. Our crews come by and chip it. That's Deer Path Road up in the Eucalyptus Hill area this last year, and it was a really phenomenal turnout for us. The community got very involved, the homeowners talked to each other, they contacted us, let us know they were going to be putting a lot of stuff out there. And we were able to go up there, have our crews chip that material. And many of those homeowners also took some of the chips that we used, because they pulled out things like lawns during the drought, and they've replaced that with, you know, kind of water-wise mulching and landscaping. So really just overall, I think, a really successful year this year. And we've also eclipsed the 4,000-ton mark since 2008. So that's, that's a real immense amount of vegetation, and we're really proud of our homeowners in that area for taking advantage of the service and kind of doing what they, doing kind of the best that they can and making that good defensible space area. And this is just a map showing those, those chipping areas that we have in the Assessment District. So we provide this map annually in the newsletter that we send out every January, and that newsletter also includes the dates for when we're going to be coming through each of those areas. We're also periodically posting signage, door knockers on, on people's properties, just so they have kind of a really good heads-up about when we're going to be coming through. And then finally, we do social media posts through Facebook and Nextdoor.com specifically for those neighborhoods, just so they have, you know, really as much of a warning and as much as a heads-up as they can. And it's, it's worked out really well. We've, again, since, this year was definitely a record year for us, and because of the end of the drought and so much green growth coming back in, it's really just great that homeowners have taken advantage of it so much. So the final program we'll cover is our vegetation management. So vegetation management projects take place outside of that required defensible space area. So we're working in areas with crews, again, outside that 100-foot or 100-foot defensible space area. And the reason is, is that we really want to expand that defensible space beyond what the homeowners are required to maintain. So we do this by removing things like flammable vegetation, dead vegetation, ladder fuels, and then invasive and exotic plant species. And as part of this program, we work one-on-one with homeowners, we enter a letter of understanding with them. So, one, we're allowed to come on their property, and they know that we're going to be there, and they understand the work that we're doing. But also to enter a maintenance agreement with them, because we want to make sure that once we do the project work in these areas, that they're able to maintain that over the following years, because we won't be able to make it back to every area every year. We want those homeowners to really kind of pick up that mantle and, and run with it, and be able to keep up with that work over the years. So some of the challenges we encounter when we're doing vegetation management, the picture on the upper left was up at the Northern Ontario Project area, and you can see there's some really steep slopes sometimes. So we're removing dead and things like that on those slopes that may have accumulated. Poison oak is something that we run into a lot onsite. So we want to make sure our crews are also safe and they're protected, and we're taking proper mitigation measures to make sure that they're not getting too covered in it. And we also run into things like nests or beehives. You know, those are things that are important ecological resources for us, that we want to be able to do fuel management and maintenance. But at the same time, we really don't want to be doing any unnatural or unnecessary disturbance to any habitat. So if we encounter biological resources onsite, we keep our distance and make sure that our crews are aware of where they are. And all of these areas in all of these pictures burned in either the T-Fire or the Hesu Zeta Fires approximately 10 years ago. So it's really great to see this wildlife be coming back into the area. But with a lot of that wildlife, we've seen a lot of growth coming back in, too. We have a lot of vegetation that's come back in these areas. And because of the drought, we've seen a lot of that vegetation has kind of died off. So we want to make sure that we're protecting our natural resources, but really making sure that our safety goals are being met. And the lower-right picture is a little bobcat that came and visited us on our last day at the North Ontario Project. And he was, he was fine with us being there and went on his merry way. So this map just shows our vegetation management units within the city. This last year, again, we focused up in North Ontario Vegetation Management Unit, and then also at the Los Canoas Vegetation Management Unit. So between those two, we completed about 16 acres of clearance, which was a really good year for us. And then this following year, we're going to be continuing that work in the Los Canoas and St. Mary's areas with an additional 14 acres of work. And just real quick, these are before and after pictures showing some of the work that we've done. This kind of shows what we're doing to reduce ladder fuels on our vegetation management units. So again, ladder fuels are those areas where we may have grasses that are growing in a brush. The brush is growing up potentially into canopies, kind of creating that continuous vertical ladder of fuel. So when we remove these ladder fuels, we really want to make sure that we're reducing the amount of stress on things like oaks and sycamores, our native vegetation that we want, that we want to retain. But again, making sure that our safety goals are met is really our number-one priority. And another quick, just before and after, showing, you know, get a lot of that fast-growing tall vegetation, a lot of the times they'll be dead, that's kind of wrapped up in the interior of that growth. And, you know, so if, we just don't want to be removing too much of the native vegetation, we want to be retaining things like our sage grass, or a sage brush, you know, and any other natives that aren't going to be posing as a significant fire hazard if a wildfire comes through, because that's really kind of part of our important chaparral ecosystem that we have here in Santa Barbara. So the Wildland program funding is the combination of the general appropriate, or the general fund appropriation and the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment Fund. And the general fund appropriation is the combined monies from the Fire Prevention Bureau, and then also other city department. So for fiscal year 2020, it's $482,315. So each year, the rate for homeowners is determined annually by our required engineer's report. And the engineer's report outlines the estimate of estimated cost based off of the Consumer Price Index. So for this year, we see an increase of 3.24%, which means the single-family parcel rate in the foothill zone is $84.86 for 2020, fiscal year 2020, and $105.23 for single-family parcel in the extreme foothill zone.
That goes to your question, Mr. Gutierrez, what they, what they pay. Seems like a good deal.
I believe so.
Go ahead.
And then this table just shows a breakdown of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, and then just how we pay individually for each of those provided services. So again, kind of showing where that monies is allocated per program there at the top, which are kind of our, our, the evacuation roadway clearing, or the defensible space management, and then also the vegetation management. So with these monies, we'll be able to continue to provide our Vegetation Road Clearance Program. Our chipping services, again, offered once a year to all homeowners within the Assessment District. Voluntary defensible space evaluations, again, offered year-round to anybody in the Assessment District. And then also continue our vegetation management projects in the St. Mary's and then Los Canoas Vegetation Management Units. So with that, I'd like to recommend the council adopt the resolution to renew the services as outlined in the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District. Thank you so much.
Are there any speaker slips? So we'll entertain questions or comments. Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you. On page 10 of the engineering report, the cost and budget, I have a question about the line items, particularly, looks like it's broken down into staff, materials, project costs. What are project costs? I'm assuming that's exclusive then of staffing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, that's correct. So those project costs are broken down per each individual. So again, the road clearance program, our chipping program, and then our vegetation management, those project costs are specifically for those individual services.
So what are those, what are those project costs going to, if it's not staffing?
That would be contractors. So through our chipping program, through our road clearance program, vegetation management, those are all contracted out individually, since we don't have any crews at the fire department that do that type of work. So again, we, we contract those out on an annual basis and using those funds.
So, for example, the evacuation planning, our staffing costs are $53,000, but then our project costs are $57,000. So we're, seems like we're spending almost as much to managing the contractor as we are on the contractor. And the same for vegetation management, we're spending $53,000 on staffing, and then $51,000 on the project.
Some money's coming from the general fund, did I see that?
Right. I- Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name's John Bliss. I am a assessment engineer consultant with a firm called SEI Consulting, and we are the assessment engineer to help out with the creation. We helped create, form the Assessment District years ago, and we do an annual report. I, I've been tasked with taking a look at the project costs, the information that I get from the city. I think the question was answered, that it, that's for subcontract costs?
Correct, for the project.
For the project costs? And the additional costs are the costs of staffing? Is the question, why are those numbers so similar?
Yeah, it seems like that's a pretty rich ratio. I know in normal government or nonprofit management, you're trying to keep admin costs around 10%, 20%, and this is more like 50%. So I just wanted to see if these line item descriptions are accurate, or if there's actually some other costs in there.
I think, great question, and I can look at that a little bit further. Why don't I look with staff, and we can get back to you. I, but I think you kind of tipped your hand at the end. I assume that the staffing costs are, a portion of those are- at the end. I assume that the staffing costs are, a portion of those are managing the subcontractors, but there's other responsibilities for each of those that are conducted by Amber and Chris, and those costs are included in those as well. We could break it out in subcontract manager and then other costs, but we've put those all into one staffing cost.
So how many staff FTEs do we have internally going to wildfire, wildland fire suppression?
For wildland, is this all? There we go. For wildland fire suppression, currently, there's two of us. So there's myself, I'm the wildland fire specialist for the city, and there's Chris Braden. Chris Braden's salary and fund is solely provided by the Assessment District, not to be confused with my position as the wildland fire specialist, which oversees all of the high fire hazard area throughout the city. So his duties are specifically to deal with all of the projects and managing that Assessment District.
So he's managing all these contracts?
Yes. Yeah, and the staffing costs that you see on there solely goes to his costs to support the program.
And then the other, the $200,000 general appropriation, where does that go? That's not on this budget page. This is figure two in the engineering report.
Mr. Bliss?
Yeah. Hi, this is John Bliss again. Great question. Yeah, we didn't include that. We could include that in the future. This is just the budget for the Assessment District. I will point out one caveat on that. If you look about halfway through down on that budget, it says less district contributions for general benefits. There is a caveat to any Prop 218 assessment, that if there are any general benefits, those that are not directly conferred on the properties, that they come from a different source. And so the minimum amount calculated and required for this assessment is $23,000 to offset those. That 23 is actually a component of the 200,000. So the 200, you are correct, is not on this budget, only a portion of it, and that is to meet that general benefit requirement.
And can you put the slide back on? I can't, I think it's maybe page 17, the 2020 estimate of costs. So, and this is, let's see, it's the same total that's in the engineering report. So where does the $482,000 go? Where does the other $200,000 go?
Go back to that.
Because slide 13 shows 482.
So what that is showing you is the total funds encompassing the entire city that we are addressing and giving towards our wildland fire programs in general. So what you're seeing is the Assessment District on one side, the other side is the general fund. That's where I come into play, and all of the other city departments. So the work provided by the Public Works Department and the Police Department, all of those funds are accounted for, and that's where the 200, it's an estimated $200,000 from the city in general, is on one side. So total, our wildland program has the $482,000.
Right. So I see a total half a million, but I only see 282 in costs. So where's the other $200,000 going?
That's to my position, right, to run the city's wildland fire program, including like the upcoming grant that we have. That'll run that. It's also the Police Department, when they work with us on evacuations, public works to go out and look at the roads, all of the contracting for permitting programs that we have throughout the city, that's where the $200,000 is coming from.
I see. So none of your salary comes from this assessment, because it's a unique program?
None at all. It's governed by Prop 218, and the funds that are derived from the Assessment District can only stay in the Assessment District. So that's Chris's position and not including mine or any of the firefighter funds or anything.
Okay, we have other?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Murillo and Councilmember Dominguez, can I add a little bit to that? So we also have two other identified high fire zones, the coastal and the coastal interior. So that's also part of her responsibilities.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Harmon, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it appropriate to make comments at this point? Are we still on questions?
I think so. There's no public comment speaker, so go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanted to start by expressing my appreciation for what you do and for this program. And, you know, we've all seen, unfortunately, how vital this is to keeping our community safe. Two things I wanted to particularly point out. First, the degree of community engagement that you guys have with this program, as evidenced by the participation in the chipping program, that's really exciting to me. I think so much of what we do when we talk about public safety and fire prevention has to come from education and working with the community. So I really appreciate that. And the second thing is your sensitivity to our natural environment. That is so important that we respect that and respect this really unique, the wonderful character we have here. So I really appreciate, it came through in your presentation, how important that is to you. So I wanted to thank you for that as well. And I would like to move that we move the staff recommendation, which is that we adopt the resolution to renew the services as outlined in the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District.
Very good. And we have a second from Mr. Friedman, who's next on the speaker stack. So go ahead, please.
Great. I have a question. Sorry, I didn't get your name. It's Mr. Braden and Ms.?
Amber Anderson.
Anderson. Well, is this your first presentation before council? Have you presented to council before?
This is my sixth presentation in front of.
Your sixth?
I actually am new as a wildland fire specialist, but I started with the city running the Assessment District for about six years, then six years as an inspector-investigator, and I've been newly promoted as a wildland fire specialist, so I'm back.
Great. I just wanted to say, I haven't seen you up here, but you've done a great presentation today, very informative, and I really appreciated the level of detail you went into. So just thank you for the presentation. I want to echo my colleague's comments, especially on the public engagement and participation, and also empowering the public to, once you've gone through, for them to continue it on their own, because we can't do it for them. That's a key part of it, the awareness, and then them having it. So it's not so overwhelming to them, so they're able to do it on their own, and so that's the multiplier effect, the natural environment, especially sensitivity to our natives. So I'm happy to support moving this forward. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Dominguez, closing remarks, please.
Yeah, my comments are, having lived in the Assessment District, I really appreciated the work you do. I think one of the corollary benefits is for people who are biking and motorcycling, and I do both of those up in the area, so it's nice not to be sliding around on bark and tree limbs. So I think it adds an extra safety factor, which means less trips for you to go up there as EMS to save people. So keep up the great work.
Okay, Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, you know, echo my council member's remarks and just thank you for everything you do for our community.
And I learned a new word. Did you say firewise vegetation?
Firewise.
See?
In fact, we have a firewise garden that is, or our firescape garden that essentially shows our firewise landscaping. That's up near Station 7 at the top of Stanwood. So we'd recommend everybody go up there and take a walk around and look at the species that they may want to plant in their yards if they live in the high fire hazard area.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and take our vote. I think we'll just do it by voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was everybody minus Ms. Sneddon, Mr. Rouse. We'll move on to the next item. Does anybody need a break, or should we power through? We might take a break after the next item. We have two more to go. We're going to go ahead and take five minutes. Thank you.[1118.42]
Item number 12, subject access improvements for Spanish speakers. Recommendation be that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending ordinance number 5865, the 2018 to 2020 memorandum of understanding with the General Bargaining Unit to include pay for participation on the Spanish language cadre.
Ms. Schmidt, are you the presenter? Thank you.
I am. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm Kristi Schmidt. I'm the Director of Administrative Services. And this issue of access improvements for Spanish speakers actually arose during the last budget cycle, during the last budget review cycle. Several members of the City Council had expressed an interest in this. And so that got us looking at our current efforts and opportunities to improve language access citywide. So today, what I want to talk about is the current Spanish language access efforts, our new Spanish language access plan, and some upcoming access improvements that we're starting off with. I have with me today Chief Nickel, of course, and a couple of members of his staff, Yoli McGlinchey, who is the Manager of Emergency Services, and Liliana Encenis, who is our bilingual public education, excuse me, bilingual public outreach coordinator in the Office of Emergency Services. And they're here because, once we get this thing flying, they're going to have, we'll discuss, a pretty big role in the implementation of the Spanish language efforts citywide. So according to the U.S. Census Bureau's 2013 to 2017 American Community Survey, 2,000, excuse me, 24,824 people in the City of Santa Barbara over the age of five, which is about 28.6 percent of our population, speak Spanish at home. So a very big percentage of our population. Now, many of those people are also fluent in English, but 11,907, or 13.7 percent of our population, speak English self-identified as less than very well. So those are the folks that we are trying to reach with our efforts to improve language access. Our current access efforts, the first one is that we have, for many years, provided a Spanish bilingual pay to staff. We have 91 employees citywide who speak Spanish at some level, and they earn between $1,300 and $1,600 a year, depending on the bargaining unit, to regularly use their Spanish language skills in the course of their, and scope of their employment. And that generally includes one-on-one interaction, customer service interactions. They have varying levels of fluency. Some people are very, very fluent. Many are, just have the basics where they can provide some basic counter-level customer service. For our police department, we recognize that there's a higher level of fluency skill needed for folks to do sort of some of the advanced duties like interpreting during complicated police interviews, or translating complex documents. Those folks get an advanced premium for those advanced Spanish language skill. So the total cost of the program citywide is $185,000, and that includes the premium itself, and as well as the benefits roll-ups on that premium, and the testing fees. We contract with a language institute to do the testing. We also provide meeting interpretation. So for our regular council meetings, Tuesday at 2:00, we do broadcast those meetings in Spanish simultaneously. There also read broadcasts, Sunday at 4:00 p.m. in Spanish. The cost of that is about $20,000 a year. We also offer headphones in council chambers, so you can come to the City Administrator's office and request a set of headphones. There's also some readouts up there where you can see, in Spanish, the printed version of what's going on live. And we also, at times, will bring in a live professional interpreter. We do not provide interpretation as a service generally for public comment. That's not something we've provided in the past. It does cost about $125 an hour to get a professional interpreter in here. So other meetings, we, sort of, each department decides based on need whether they're going to have a professional interpretation service at the meeting. An example of a time where we recently brought in professional interpretation was when we were drawing the districts for district elections in my department. But that's done on a case-by-case basis, really based on the number of people we think will be asking for that service. Other access efforts include document translation. Those are done by departments based on demand. So for example, the library, most of their departments are available in both English and Spanish. In other departments, they don't have a very high demand for Spanish versions of the documents, perhaps because there are a lot of very good document translation programs available on the web that can help do that. But we don't see a lot of demand in some departments, but in others, we do. So that's on a case-by-case basis as well. The city's main phone line, if you call into the city, you can listen to the whole tree of where to go and what services are available in either English or Spanish. And the city's website has, if you go to the city's website, up in the corner, there's a quick toggle that will toggle the website contents into Spanish or any other language that's offered through Google Translate. Finally, and most recently, we did hire a bilingual public outreach coordinator, and that is Liliana Encenis, who's sitting here right now. So she was hired in fall of 2018, and she reports to emergency services. But part of the vision for this position was that certainly improving our outreach in emergency services situations, but also citywide. And so she's managed to do a whole lot, she and Yoli McGlinchey have managed to do a whole lot while, in the short time she's been here. They've put together a whole community committee with leaders from different organizations serving vulnerable populations in the community. They are developing a strategic plan to reach vulnerable populations. They've got an informational voice line now in English and Spanish, and it has emergency prevention information on it all the time, but it can also be employed during an emergency to provide telephone information to callers. They have, in the recent flooding, they did an online Spanish, online feed in Spanish of what was going on. They've also collaborated, they've started, and I'll have, Yoli may want to say something about this in a little bit, but they've restarted our Spanish CERT program, and, what's the other one I'm missing? CERT and?
Listos.
Oh, and the Listos program, which is also in Spanish. And they've collaborated with the Independent on their emergency preparedness booklet, and also with the County Office of Emergency Management on their draft mass alerting generator. And, Yoli, did you want to talk a little bit about some of these accomplishments? They're pretty impressive.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. So we have been doing a lot in the last, actually, the last couple of years, but even more so since Liliana's come on board. And some of the things that, Santa Barbara City has always been a collaborative city, and so we do collaborate with the rest of the county to have one voice and one message that goes out to the community. And a lot of work has been done since 2018, since the debris flow, and making sure that we reach all of our community, not just our Spanish speakers, but those that are low-vision, blind, hard-of-hearing, mobility issues. We want to make sure that everybody, the homeless, we want to make sure that everybody understands what the hazards are in our community, and how they can prepare themselves for that. And so we've worked a lot with the county. We just found out yesterday that we won the Outstanding Innovation Award as the County Public Education Awareness Committee for all of the work that we've been doing with Spanish CERT, Listos. We have CERT with the Braille Institute, so they teach Braille to their community, sorry, they teach CERT to their community, along with Listos to their community. So we've been doing a lot, and Liliana's been really out there, bringing people in with the whole community, I'm sorry, the whole community committee. We're bringing in leaders to be able to build that cultural ambassadors that will go out and reach into places that we can't go into, we just don't have the staffing for it. But as we build a relationship with those leaders, we can get into communities and neighborhoods with information on how they can be prepared for the next disaster, because it's not if, when we have that next disaster. And so we want to make sure that our community becomes as resilient as possible to be able to withstand whatever happens with us. And it also includes, how do we reach our tourism? You know, what do we do with our hospitality industry? And so we're really trying to get out there and touch as much of our community as we can, and along with the county as well, to be able to get that one voice out, the same messaging out to all of our community. So we've been doing a lot since then. Tomorrow night, we graduate our Spanish CERT class, and there's 32 graduating tomorrow night, and we just graduated Listos class of 2028. They're never small classes. They're always big, great food, it's always amazing to go. I look forward to it tomorrow night. We've been doing Spanish CERT for the last four or five years, and Liliana was very instrumental in working with FEMA to develop the first CERT Train the Trainer, where we actually trained 39 individuals to be able to give the CERT class in Spanish. And I can't remember, how many Listos instructors do we have now?
Twenty-five active in South.
Twenty-five active Listos instructors in South County. And that doesn't include statewide. Liliana's been very instrumental in helping the State of California Office of Emergency Services and their Division of Cal Volunteers to be able to get the Listos program out through the whole state, and it's now going international. And so at the CERT-Listos Conference next week, Liliana's going to be the international, what is it?
Language access.
Language access. They gave her a really good title, and she's actually going to be co- emceeing the whole conference with the state. So a lot of stuff that we've been doing, I'm very excited to be working with her. And moving forward, we're looking at a lot more programs and campaigns that we want to do within the city.
Okay, thank you. So the new Spanish language access plan that we're proposing, and it's attached in the written report, will provide us a framework. We've had a lot of these efforts, and this will provide sort of a concentrated framework for improving our language access efforts. The goals are to provide Spanish speakers with improved access to city services, communication of important information particularly during an emergency, but also just day-to-day, provide opportunities to participate in public meetings. So we'll also be working with this plan in order to balance need against the available resources to ensure that we're using available resources efficiently in meeting the needs of the community. So the goals of the Spanish language access plan are to create and publicize a set of guidelines, which will be how to request access services, all the way to teaching staff to how to work with an interpreter, it's an art, how to use our efforts to use our bilingual staff effectively, to develop access to professional interpretation services for our departments, to identify and translate important print and online materials, and we've got a couple of initiatives, we'll talk a little bit along these lines, also to establish and maintain community partnerships. And this is, Yoli and Liliana have already established some of these, so in their whole community committee, they've got the Latino Elderly Outreach Network, Just Communities, Casa de la Raza, Immigrant Hope, and other organizations in the community who could be very valuable in helping us to ensure that our messages are getting out and that our services are being provided to this community. And then another goal is to assign a Spanish language access plan coordinator, who, as you can imagine, the best person for the job, sitting right next to me here. So initially, will be Liliana Encenis, and building on some of the work that she's done already. So some specific improvements, and the Spanish language access plan is designed to be a long-term framework, and to really let us work over the long term to evaluate need and put new programs into place. But some of the exciting new things that we're doing is improving the existing bilingual staff program. So we have created, before, it's been sort of, who's the person who speaks Spanish? And everybody's sort of word of mouth. But we've created an internal site for our staff so they can go and very quickly see who is out there, who is a Spanish speaker that they can call upon. We're going to retest our employees periodically, both to ensure that they continue to be fluent, but also to provide them with an impetus to improve their Spanish language going forward. We're also going to provide employee training in Spanish conversation and, you know, job-related vocabulary, which we think will be, through our existing training program, which we think will be popular. So we also want to create a Spanish outreach cadre. So one of the things we learned in the recent fire situation was that some of our bilingual employees just don't have that high level of fluency needed to do things like give an interview on TV, or translate a press release in the moment as we need them to do it. So what we want to do is create a cadre of employees who can test at that higher level speaking and writing skill, and train them in translation, but all interpretation, but also disaster response, public communication, and media relations, and pay them $10 an hour on top of their, you know, existing premiums while they're performing those duties. So they also will perform a role in helping us translate more of our documents into Spanish from all of our departments. So we're also going to develop some professional interpretation agreements, where we have pre-existing contracts with qualified professional interpreters, so that our departments don't have to worry about how they're going to find an interpreter, or develop a contract with an interpreter. They can just really quickly go and call somebody up and get those services, and they're pre-negotiated, pre-authorized, and easy to get. We're going to do council meeting interpretation upon demand. So we have not provided interpretation as a service thus far for people who want to make public comment at your meeting. We tell them to bring their own interpreter. So what we're offering is, we don't get a lot of requests for this, so we're going to start by offering this on-demand. So we've added something to the agenda that says that you can contact us if you need interpretation services to make public comment at the council meeting. That's available on 48 hours' notice, or as available on shorter notice. And particularly when we get a couple of negotiated contracts, we anticipate that we'll be able to provide that on shorter than 48 hours' notice. So that's an improvement we're looking at making. We're going to create a document translation plan. So you go to the website, and you can translate it into Spanish, but a lot of the documents are on there, including application forms are still only in English. So we're going to identify and prioritize the documents that we'd like to see in Spanish and English, and then the cadre members will work to help us translate those into Spanish. And then we'll make those available both at counters and on the website. So in summary, the Spanish language access plan is here to provide us a framework to improve our existing access efforts, and the new improvements will be a first step, but it is a long-term plan, and we expect to make regular progress to identify and address need. And then the access plan coordinator will work with staff and community partners to continuously revise and refine our Spanish language outreach efforts. And that's my presentation.
Wow, I'm really, really happy about this. We'll start with Ms. Sneddon, questions, please.
Oh, actually, I just had comments.
No speaker slips, English or Spanish? Okay, we'll make this both, if you have questions, or to go ahead and make your comments. Go ahead, Ms. Sned.
I just have to say, I could not be more pleased with the outcome of this. What started with, I mean, we all understand that emergency communication begins far before the actual disaster hits, and the infrastructure for this being put in place for the communication, and then building on that, what more you've done with the idea that this was important in terms of communication among staff and increasing public participation, that's a real bonus for all of us, to be able to hear from more of our public, that the applications will be translated. I'm really excited about this advanced Spanish outreach cadre. I mean, that's really, there is a difference between just translation that is enough to get you through, and then we've seen, especially in the disasters, when things aren't translated accurately, how that can lead to misperception, but all the way through, not just in disaster. So I'm just very, very pleased with how this is going, and how quickly this has come up to speed, and excited to see what will happen with the position as it grows. And not just the position, but as you mentioned, it's outreach you've been doing for a long time, but just this extra focus has really a benefit for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
Mr. Dominguez? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm also very excited about this program, not least of all, because it saves me from being up in the middle of the night on Facebook trying to do simultaneous Spanish interpretation. Not being a native speaker is a real task. I really appreciate the cadre program. It sounds very, very interesting, like we can move the needle on a lot of projects and get some returns on our investment that we weren't expecting, I think, with our goals, with the environment and sustainability. This is a program that really adds connectedness between communities, and where really strengthens people's abilities to be engaged and do some of the work, some of the heavy lifting we're going to ask them to do. I think back to our water conservation efforts, and how strong of a response we had from the community, and I think this will allow for, particularly in emergency preparedness, for that strong level of community engagement, so I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
This is exciting for all residents in our community, especially when we're dealing with public safety and literally life and death situations in some instances. I do want to thank the public that a year ago came forward and advocated to us at the council, the need for this translation and this position. It had been there in the past, but when the recession came, it was cut back. And always, we have limited resources, but the public made the case, and our council heard you, and there was some debate on, with all the different priorities, but we decided to move forward on this. So I thank my colleagues a year ago for doing this, and this, I think, has exceeded even our expectations on it, and it'll be a major portion of the work we're doing going forward on a lot of different areas. So thanks to the public for coming out a year ago. Your voices were heard, and glad to see the progress you've made.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo everyone's comments and say how important this is for our community, because for years, people have been telling me that they didn't have anyone to talk to. So it's really reassuring that this is happening. And yeah, I want to thank the public. I know a lot of members of the public stepped forward, not to name-drop anybody, but like Lizzie Rodriguez was a champion of this, so I appreciate those efforts. And yeah, thank you, and let us know how we can help you out more. Thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez, would you like to make the motion? It's to move the ordinance forward.
Yes, I make the motion to move the ordinance.
Second. And a second from Mr. Ross. All right, you're next on the speaker slip. Did you want to say a few words? That was it? You wanted to make a motion, okay.
It's a thunder.
Well, I'm pleased too, thank you. It's having people be prepared for emergencies, and then having information during emergencies, and then just improving our access for everyone out there. And believe me, the word will spread that we're more friendly to Spanish speakers. I do have some connections, I know Ms. Encenis does too, with Radio Bronco and the Spanish language media, and we'll spread the word if they don't already know. Well, they know about Listos and CERT for sure. But people will, I think they'll start to come more, and then it'll grow that way, too. We have to let people know that they're welcome to be engaged. And Ms. Schmidt, I think you speak some good Spanish, too, just to give you a little bit of credit for all the study you've done.
Muchas gracias.
You're welcome. So we'll go ahead, and we know the motion is to move the ordinance forward, so all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. That was unanimous. Thanks so much. So we have another item. So Mr. Casey, after that, we go into closed session, and that's going to be a long one. And then it's- And then at 6 o'clock, we're coming back for the interview. So out in TV land, if you put in an application to be on one of our advisory boards, this is the last opportunity to interview. Okay, so get down here by 6 o'clock to interview for the advisory board that you put in an application for. So Ms. Estrada, what is this one now? Number 13.
Item number 13, subject November 2019 election plans and authorization of city administrator to execute memorandum of understanding with Los Angeles County regarding November 2019 election.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gorman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Sarah Gorman, the City Clerk Services Manager, here with Administrative Services Director Christy Schmidt, to talk you through the plans for our November 19 election. So talking about our election planning, we have our election coming up on November 5th of this year, 2019. It's a general and special municipal election. For the general election, we'll have three regular council seats, Districts 1, 2, and 3. Those are going to be for five-year terms. And for the special election, we'll have one two-year term for District 6, and also the possibility of a citywide election if a voter-sponsored initiative qualifies for the ballot. And this initiative relates to the ZIR, zoning information report ordinance. For background, there's been a mass switch in the state from cities running their own elections in odd years, in March and April and November, to consolidating with counties and running their election in even years. And as you know, the City of Santa Barbara is doing that switch as well. We'll be switching to even-year elections pursuant to Measure B, the charter amendment on last year's ballot that the voters voted in favor of. But under the plan, we still have two odd-year elections until our first even-year election in 2024. So we're talking about what to do with this next odd-year election. The concern is that the bottom dropped out of the election vendor market due to the lack of cities conducting their own elections. There essentially was one primary vendor, a company called Martin &amp; Chapman, based out of Orange County, that was the vendor for almost every city that was running their own election. And once cities switched to even-year elections and started contracting with the county, there just wasn't the market for that business model anymore. So our usual city election vendors run available. We've reached out for a lot of people for help with this. First, we reached out to the Santa Barbara County Elections Office, who are very nice, but unfortunately, were unable to help this coming election. And we also reached out to our neighboring counties. We've reached out to Ventura County and San Luis Obispo Counties, but unfortunately, they were unable to help also. We then went a little farther south and talked to Los Angeles County, and happily, they are able to assist. They are a leader in election innovation. They operate elections for so many jurisdictions, over 100. They, if there's an election date, they are generally running an election on that day. They are moving forward with different technologies. They have an eight-story building in Norwalk. This is their gig, and they are very advanced in the subject. Currently, we have a tentative agreement with the county to administer certain portions of the ballot process. All of this would be overseen by my office. I would remain, and Mr. Casey, the city administrator, city clerk, would remain the elections official, but the LA County would be engaged with the ballot design, printing, mailing, tally, and canvas. And our office would operate the nomination process that happens in the summer. We would pick up and deliver vote-by-mail ballot envelopes to Los Angeles County from a Santa Barbara post office box, so voters would still be returning their ballots to a post office box in Santa Barbara. Our office would review the signatures on those mailed vote-by-mail envelopes, either specifically in my office or contracting with a consultant who would essentially have a desk down there in Norwalk. Our office would operate ballot drop-off centers on Election Day, and in general, supervise the process as the elections official. Talking about election night results and the tally process, the election night results would include the votes cast through the week before Election Day, with the possibility of some results cast the day before Election Day. And then there would be a follow-up tally on the Friday of Election Day week, and that would include everything else that came in that week, ballots cast the day before Election Day, Election Day, and those postmarked by Election Day and received by that Friday. As a general note, and I'm sure you've noticed this over the past couple of years, due to changes in election laws, a significant number of ballots are currently tallied in those days after election nights because of a change in the law in 2015. If a vote-by-mail ballot is postmarked by Election Day, then it can be counted as long as it is received by the Friday of that week. So it used to be, up to a couple of years ago, the ballot had to be received by the elections official by Election Day, but now it has to be a postmark date. That means that there already, over the past several elections, have been more and more results coming in that are tallied on the Friday, so this would be a continuation of that pattern.
Ms. Harmon has a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Gorman. I'm just curious, this, on Slide 9, where you say with the possibility of some results cast the day before Election Day, that doesn't mean that you would report out results received. I just, my interest is in making sure that everyone votes, and I worry if we report results that have been received before Election Day, people would feel that they don't need to vote.
Very good question, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Harmon. No, all I'm talking through there is how many votes would be included in the results that we release on election night. So we would not be releasing any results until after the polls close. It's just a question of how many ballots are included in that Tuesday night tally and how many then are included on Friday. In terms of budget, we are working with Los Angeles County on the costs, but we expect the cost to be less than the estimated amount for a standalone election. Essentially, Los Angeles County runs elections, that's what they do. They're already running an election, so they already have the standing costs, so they would, of course, be charging us their costs, but it's, would be a reasonable expense. So the recommended actions are what you're doing now to receive a report regarding planning for the November 5th, 2019, City of Santa Barbara general and special municipal election, and two, to authorize the city administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder's Office regarding administration of elements of the November 5th, 2019, City of Santa Barbara general and special municipal election. And I'm available for questions.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Casey, do we already have a set aside in your budget for this?
Ms. Sneddon?
I just had a question about the process. So at what point do you start counting? So they have to be transported first, so that like the day before, when you say the ballots close, and then preliminary results would be released, who's counting the ones from the day before, or at what point do they get transported, and how do they get transported?
So they will be transported down to, from Santa Barbara, down to Norwalk by two persons, and we will do it either every, a couple of times a week, or daily as we get closer. The signatures on those ballots will be verified so that we'll know that X envelope with X signature can be counted. And then 10 days before the election, LA County will open their ballot board, which is the point at which they open those envelopes, get them ready to run through the counter, and then they will release results on, after the polls close, on Tuesday night. So it's really a question of how quickly we can get ballots down there on the week of Election Day, to see what's in that first tally.
So the signature verification happens here, or it happens there?
It will happen supervised by my office. What we're in negotiations for, and it looks like we'll be able to do, is have a consultant actually do that verification down in Norwalk. It will be a consultant that used to be employed by Martin &amp; Chapman, that election vendor. So he will be under our supervision, but essentially, we will send those envelopes down to him and his staff. He will check the signatures down in Norwalk and then hand the ballots over to the LA County staff to be ready for opening and tallying when you get close to the election.
So then the address on the mail-in ballot will be Santa Barbara or will be Los Angeles?
Santa Barbara.
Okay.
So people are returning their ballots to Santa Barbara Post Office as they always have.
And then once they're collected, then they will be transported?
Exactly.
By people?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Well, we like and trust our Santa Barbara County Elections Office so much, they just weren't available.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion for number two, to have Mr. Casey execute the MOU with the Los Angeles County Registrar? That was Rouse Dominguez. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for working on that. And what's next is for us to report our committee assignments. I'm not ready. So Mr. Friedman, you go ahead and start.
All right. I attended the Visit Santa Barbara Annual Tourism Meeting, the Arts Advisory Committee, Beacon, and Pata Moran Labor Champion of the Year Award Dinner.
Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended Visit Santa Barbara Annual Luncheon, also the Creeks Committee. They had their annual bio assessment, which is available online for anybody who's interested in that, and talked about illicit discharge and outreach programs. Also, attended the League of Cities Annual Meeting in Paso Robles with many of my colleagues, and Mr. Casey as well, and Nina Johnson. Was a panelist, on WPC, panelist for Run Like a Woman Workshop. Attended the Riviera Association Spring Meeting as a panelist with Sheila Lodge and Fred Sweeney. Attended the COME meeting where we adopted the fiscal year 1920 budget. Importantly, adopted a hazard mitigation plan annex to the Santa Barbara County multi-jurisdictional plan, which allows us to apply for grant funding and to be part of the larger hazard mitigations, which will help frayer costs, to frayer costs. Rainfall projection, we're at 119% of normal rainfall for the year, and we're still receiving water into Lake Kachuma, which is exciting. We also discussed the feasibility and cost of a bottom-mounted pipeline, which is something that we're in conversation about. It will cost around $1 million. If we do go that route, we split among the member agencies. Attended UCSB Economic Summit, and that is all.
Thanks. I attended the SB CAG meeting, and we had an interesting presentation about libraries countywide. SB CAG is a regional body, and the executive director is always encouraging us to bring items, other, subjects other than transportation and housing there. So County Supervisor Joan Hartman had us take a look at the budget for that countywide system, maybe some changes ahead on that. I was at the Air Pollution Control District Board of Directors, and people are starting to come to those meetings to talk about commercial cannabis and possible air pollution from that industry. The Visit Santa Barbara Annual Meeting, it was just so beautifully done, and gosh, what was that lady's name? She was Gail? Cheryl. Cheryl Strayed, and she's the one who took that trip, that hiking trip by herself, and they made a movie of it with Reese Witherspoon, and she talked about the transformative nature of travel, kind of made you want to go out and be adventurous. I was, went to Laguna Blanca Citizenship Breakfast. I was a little girl's hero, and that was really wonderful. And I was there with some of our firefighters and other people prominent in the community. That was a feel-good. I spoke to Logic Monitor, their employees, they're nearby, and I'd like to just thank them. It's a private company that gives money to Home for Good for the reunification program. So we help people who are here, homeless, living on the street, get back home. So, Mr. Dominguez, go ahead.
Thank you. I was also at the League Channel Counties Annual Dinner Meeting, the Riviera Association, got to see my colleague, give a great presentation along with the co-panelists, the SB Bike Coalition event, the UCSB Economic Summit, and the Airport Commission.
Very good. Oh, and the organic soup kitchen moved to a new place, and they had a nice, they had a nice event. Okay, so that's it for those reports. We're going to go to closed session. Can you read those, please?
Item number 14, subject conference with city attorney, existing litigation as described in Agenda Item Number 14. Item number 15, conference with city attorney, existing and anticipated litigation as described in Agenda Item Number 15.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
And item number 16, subject conference with city attorneys, existing litigation as described in Agenda Item Number 16.
Did you have anything to add, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, we have one title on the listing that's not correct. It's People of the State of California versus Dario Peña. That is not a subject of this closed session. We've taken it out of our presentation, but I wanted to clear it up on the agenda. Thank you.
Very good. We will adjourn to closed session, and then we'll be back here at 6:00 PM for advisory board interviews. Meeting adjourned. We'll reconvene this meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. Madam Clerk, what's our item tonight?
Item number 17, subject interviews for city advisory groups.
Okay. So thank you so much for applying to be on one of our advisory boards or commissions. And we'll go in alphabetical order, and you have a couple of minutes to come up and tell us why you applied, why you think you're good for the job. Don't be nervous, I see some young people out there, and public speaking is intimidating for all of us. So just come on, come on up and be yourself. Building and fire code, no, we've already, sorry. Anyone for the Measure C Citizens Oversight Committee? Civil Service Commission? Community Development and Human Services Committee? Community Events and Festivals? The County Library Advisory Committee? We did you in, yeah, we did that. Creeks Advisory Committee? Housing Authority Commission? Oh, three of you. Come on up. Mr. Rau, you go first, you're closest. How's that?
Is this on?
Yeah, it's on now.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm David Rau, and I'm applying for the position of Housing Authority Commissioner because I'm passionate about helping the City of Santa Barbara find solutions to affordable housing and the homeless challenge. As some of you are aware, I was employed at the City of Santa Barbara up until the end of last year as a housing project planner. And during that time, I, it was a little over eight years, I had an excellent working relationship with the Housing Authority, and we had many successes together. We added public financing to several low-income housing tax credit projects such as Grace Village, Johnson Court, and Bradley Studios. I was actually the auditor of the tax credit applications for them as well. We also, together, re-engineered the financing on We also, together, re-engineered the financing on, city financing on two projects, Eleanor Apartments and Garden Courts, so that Housing Authority could acquire those properties and extend the affordability covenants. On numerous occasions, I provided Housing Authority with, the city provided, with CDVG funds and home funds to rehabilitate numerous projects in their portfolio, resulting in extending the useful life of these projects and extending their affordability term. Prior to being at the city, I worked at Fannie Mae for 17 years in setting affordable housing public policy and doing real estate transactions on a national basis. I have a very deep understanding of real estate finance. And I believe that my background, given the current environment, can be a very positive contribution to the Housing Authority. Due to the lack of available subsidies and the city's desire to serve the missing middle, this is going to require some creative financing, where you put various financing sources together. For example, the parking lot transaction that they're working on currently. I've attended several Housing Authority Commission meetings. I understand and I totally agree with their mission. I take very seriously the role of Housing Authority Commissioner, which includes ensuring fairness of administrative housing authority policies, attracting adequate resources, balancing the demands of conflicting community groups, and winning the public support. I really appreciate this opportunity, and I would really like to contribute to the city's goal of solving the affordable housing and homeless problem. Thank you.
Thanks. Questions for Mr. Rau? No, good. Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Allen, why don't you come up next?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council Members. Good evening. I am here also to apply for the Housing Authority Commission. I come at it with quite a different perspective than the previous applicant. Going through the questions, the interview questions that are emailed to us, I'm willing and able to devote the time necessary. I am familiar with the Housing Authority Commission and their wide range of responsibilities. In terms of my skill set, a little bit different. I've been a planner in our community for just about 20 years. So, I started working for the city of Santa Barbara in the Planning Division in the late 90s and transitioned to the private sector. So, really, sort of my why, my inspiration, I mean, we all deal with housing issues and the, sort of the crisis that's happening in our community and statewide. And with my involvement, working in my day-to-day job and participating in hearings, coming to you, providing my comment or perspective, with the recent legislative acts coming down from the state, I really have gotten more motivated over time to get more involved in the efforts and the programs that the Housing Authority supports. So, I just feel like it's, it's my, I want to be passionate about it, I want to make a difference, and contribute my perspective as it relates to, to the decisions and the responsibilities that the Housing Authority carries out. I'm really, I have attended a Housing Authority Commission hearing since I filed my application. They've had a couple of cancellations this year, so I did get to go to the last one. And I've just always appreciated the work that the Housing Authority has done. I did have the opportunity to work with them when I worked at the city as a planner. At the time, we had the Redevelopment Agency, so that partnership was really successful. I worked on the Affordable Housing Project over at St. Vincent's Mercy Housing when I was on, on staff there that sort of inherited it. I was on the tail end of that, but it was a really exciting opportunity for me to be exposed to all the things that, and the programs that the Housing Authority and other affordable housing programs associated with that. There's, I could probably go on, but I won't. I know you've had a really long day, and thank you very much for your time.
I think Ms. Nennen has a question for you.
Just a quick question. Thank you for applying. Do you see any potential conflict with being in the private sector and coming before us and being on the Housing Authority Commission? I'm not sure there would be, but would you see any?
I, I thought about that. Thank you for the question. I, I don't see a potential conflict. I'd rather I see the opposite in terms of being able to be in an advocacy role for, for the Housing Authority and the programs that they promote, and also being that, that voice to the, the client base that I, that I work with, that maybe don't know a lot about the programs. But we don't, we don't work, I, I just don't, I don't see that being a conflict. And if, if we, I were working on an affordable housing project, if that came my way into our office, then I would need to, you know, certainly recuse myself from any decisions that the, that the commission would make. But I don't, I don't see that as a significant impact. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Third gentleman out there? Here, Mr. Frankenfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe. Go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jeff Frankenfield. I am applying for one of the at-large positions of the Housing Authority Commission. And, and like the previous lady who, who came on up here, I'm just going to kind of run through the, the questions that, that we had as well. As far as the time commitment, not, not an issue at all. Just as a side note, I, I'll back up a little bit. I finally moved into the city, city proper of Santa Barbara one month ago. I've, I've lived in the area about six years. I've always been a, been a servant of the community I've been in, whether it's a Marine for the federal government, obviously for our country. When I moved here six years ago, I was just outside the city lines. I was in county. And I moved up to Galita for a couple of years and down. And through that process, I've been a Santa Barbara Police Chaplain. I've been a, I've opened up a, a counseling center. Even last year, the last couple of years, I was a football coach up at DP High School, head coach for, for JV. And I did that because I wanted to get to know the community. I wanted to put my time and energy into the community in, in every way, shape, and form. I'm always serving in some capacity. And so, the moment I, we were finally able, and it's, it's housing, it took us a long time to get into the city, took us months, took us seven offers on a home. I mean, it was, it's, it's crazy here, you know? But, but the point is, I'm here to serve, and I serve, most of my time is spent serving the community in some way, shape, or form. My background is primarily in business. I've been in business for 21 years at a variety of levels. Been in sales and sales leadership for the majority of that. I've been on boards of, of nonprofits and profit, profitable companies, so I understand budgets. I've sold and been in the government, government arena for, for quite a number of years, understand project space and kind of the budgeting cycle of government and where the money needs to pull from, et cetera. And then also, just as a side note, the industry I'm in now is a very creative one. I call on the likes of Facebook and Google and Amazon and Microsoft. And the point of that is, those sorts of companies think outside the box. They take the status quo, and they say, that's fine, that's great. They glean from it what they can, but they try and make things better. And I want to bring that atmosphere to this position as well. If I have a seat there, I understand that there's ways of going about things, and I want to learn what has been successful and what challenges have been out there. But I don't want to just necessarily put ourselves in a box. I want to be able to bring that creative flow to government and see what can be done. Let's see, what else did I miss here? Any questions? I'm sure I could talk and talk, so.
That's good. Thank you. Questions? I don't see any lights. So, thank you so much for applying.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else that might have come in? Oh, for Housing Commission? Oh, for other?
For Community Development.
Okay. We're, we're going to go through, and we'll come back to you then, ma'am. So, Living Wage Advisory Committee, I think we've seen everyone. Anyone for the Measure P Committee? Neighborhood Advisory Council? Come on up.
Hi. Good evening, City Council. My name's Danny Hemingway, applying for the Neighborhood Advisory Council. And I do have the time to be at the meetings, and I have been to multiple of the meetings. The reason I'm interested is, two, two main reasons. The first is the moving forward of the Strategic Energy Plan. I'm really passionate about sustainability and renewable energy. And it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the Neighborhood Advisory Council members are in a good position specifically for the outreach section of the Strategic Energy Plan. And that would be what I would be most excited about, is I've been in the solar industry for about three and a half, four years now, in many capacities, sales, sales leadership, training of other sales reps, and basically just taking complex concepts and simplifying them and communicating them to the public, and I really enjoy doing that. So, I'd be really excited to put together some community trainings about either the community choice energy or just solar in general. And then, it seems like we, the Neighborhood Advisory Council functions as the go-between somewhere between the public and all of you. And that's a role I've always enjoyed, is being that kind of go-between function and communicating between those, those different worlds. So, that's the main motivation I have for applying to the role. And also, I'm passionate about biking. Biked over here. I bike as much as I can, and I've gone to a few community meetings about biking and transportation. There was that one at Harding School a few weeks ago. I thought it was great where we have those maps and everyone has the breakout groups and they mark up the maps. I think it's an awesome idea. Kudos to whoever came up with that and keeps it going. Really seemed to engage everyone, and I felt engaged, so I enjoyed that. And also, I've attended some community meetings at the Central Library about the housing density and all that. So, yeah, just looking to get more involved and passionate about the Strategic Energy Plan.
Mr. Hemingway?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any questions? Sounds good. Thanks so much for your good energy tonight. No pun intended. Neighborhood Advisory Council? Anyone else? The Youth Council? Okay. Santa Barbara Youth Council. Just, yeah, one at a time, come on up. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm honored, my name's Emerson Steady. I'm honored to be speaking before you as an applicant for the Santa Barbara Youth Council. I'm currently a ninth grader at Santa Barbara Middle School, but I will be attending Santa Barbara High School in the fall. I'm very passionate about making positive changes in our community, and I feel very fortunate that we have an organization like the Santa Barbara Youth Council to allow teens to engage in this way. As part of an advisory board to the city council, I am excited to give the city council recommendations on teen-related issues, and also to be a part of our own outreach campaigns in terms of public forums, on ongoing issues, and the production of PSAs. When it comes to that, I hope to contribute my artistic talents, based on my lifelong passion for theater and music, to make those endeavors reach larger audiences. As an example of using art as outreach, last year, I was a producer of the benefit concert Teen Sing for Santa Barbara, which raised funds for the Unity Shops Disaster Relief Fund. That experience was transformative and taught me a lot about working with a group of people to get something done when you share a common goal but don't necessarily always agree, much like in politics. My performance skills, I think, will also help me as a communicator for the youth council, where they're represented at local events. As a member of the Youth Council, there are many issues I want to address, ranging from as large as the existential threat that climate change poses, which especially affects our youth, who will be bearing the brunt of those effects, to as small as the state of the bathrooms at our public schools. But I think that the unifying factor in all of these is that teens have a unique perspective they can provide on these issues. The world is a very different place than it was when you were in school. School shootings are now commonplace enough for schools to hold lockdown drills and politicians to suggest the ideas of arming teachers. When it comes to ideas as divisive as that, I think it's very important that teens have a voice in those decisions. One idea which could be very effective in that area is to follow in the footsteps of Berkeley, California, which allows students as young as 16 to vote for the school board, which makes decisions that really affect them the most. Above all, I'm thrilled to be able to join a group of teens that are as passionate as I am about making differences in the community. I've had the honor of interning with Mayor Maria when she was a council member, and have recently been campaigning to implement ranked choice voting in Santa Barbara. I'm excited for the Youth Council to give me an outlet where I can bring my ideas forward more readily, and we can collaborate to make those ideas a reality. The Youth Council will be a top priority of mine, along with school, obviously. As with everyone, I'm sure there will be some conflicts, but my passion for politics will keep me driven to be an integral part of this group. Lastly, I want to thank the city council and the current members of the Youth Council for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Gutierrez, question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Emerson, you really should have gone last. But I know you from TVSB, and I know that you're super talented, and I know that, like you, you're, you're passionate about the arts, and I know that you're going to be applying to be in the theater program at Santa Barbara High School. Is that right?
Yes.
So, do you think realistically you'll have the time to be a part, an effective part of the Youth Council and being a part of all the other programs and, and clubs that you're, you're involved in?
Yeah. So, the theater rehearsals at Santa Barbara High School usually extend from four to five. So, then, on Monday, I will be going to the council meetings after rehearsal. And I don't think that that will be too much of an issue. I can either leave early, would probably be the best solution. The other thing is, as we get closer to shows in that respect, there might be like one week, which is our tech week, which is when we have rehearsals all day, which would be like one meeting I need to miss, right? And there'd be like two to three shows a year, but that would probably be the main conflict. But I, I feel very strongly about this, and I will work very hard to make sure I am able to contribute fully.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Youth Council applicants? Don't be shy. Come on up. And tell us your name and school.
Hello, I'm River Prue Kelly. I currently go to Lacalina Junior High School, but next year, I will be attending San Marcos High School.
Say your last name again?
Prue Kelly. Do you want me to spell it?
Yeah. Is that with the P?
Yeah. Prue. Yeah, sorry. I forgot that it's Sabrina. It probably says Sabrina on there. Sorry, I forgot.
Okay, okay. Public at Large, Sabrina Prue Kelly. Okay. Do we all have it? I'm the slow one. Okay. Please, go ahead.
I am really excited to apply to Youth Council because for the, for like since, for since December, I've been a, I've been the only junior high representative on Youth Council, and I found it very informative, and I really liked being able to contribute to the community in that aspect. I would like to join the Youth Council because of that and because I like being able to focus on the things that affect my generation and have more of a voice. I, I think, some things that I would like to focus on as like part of, some things that I would like to focus on are representing the LGBTQ community because that, because I, because mostly because I'm a part of that, but also just because it seems like most of the things that we're focusing on currently are gun control and drugs among youth. And I'd like to do this because I, partially because I want to be able to practice for when I'm an adult and people, and even more people will listen to us, so that... And another thing that I'd like to focus on is the environment and protecting it, because we're the ones that are going to, that, we're the ones that are going to grow up and inherit the world. So, I'd like to focus on that and help with that. It would be, I, I wouldn't have any conflicts when it comes to time, and it would be a top priority of mine. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I don't see any lights, so I'll encourage more applicants for the Teen Council to come on up.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hello. My name's Veronica Sanchez. I'm 17, and I go to Santa Barbara High School. I'm applying to a position on Youth Council. So, when did I hear about Youth Council? I work at the Franklin Center, and so does Roberta, and I saw her putting up some flyers for a media camp, and that's when I asked... a media camp. And that's when I asked her, what is that? And she's like, oh, Youth Council is making some PSAs for gun control, no, what is it? Like gun control and-
Gun safety?
Gun safety and like reduction in tobacco, right? And after that, after going to the camp, I met Councilwoman Gutierrez. And then I started learning how to use the cameras and how to use other equipment to make the advertisements. And I kind of wanted to like continue being a part of it. So I asked her if like they could consider letting me keep going to like their, to their events and all the stuff they had. So I've been going to like a few of the meetings. And so I see how it's run. And I just, I really like the feel of it. Youth Council would be like one of my top priorities. My, my schedule is really flexible and I would make sure that, to keep my Mondays free, to go during Saturdays because I know sometimes they have stuff outside of Mondays, you know? I would try and keep a very flexible schedule. For extra curriculars, in Santa Barbara High School, we have a club called In La Quech. And it was started this year. Like I was part of making the logo and contacting people to, to help us. Right now, we're being helped by just communities. And In La Quech is a club for undocumented students and spreading information to them and to their families. Recently, we had a conference at the high school for parents. And I, it was a really fun conference. Like I tried to bring people who are really knowledgeable about going to college as an undocumented student. And just I brought in more, like me and my group, we brought a lot of resources for the parents to know about their, how their students can make it and how they can help their, their daughters, their sons. And in the conference, we also brought in a lot of cultural stuff. So there was dance Azteca and there was chica no muralism. And after that experience, I just felt really passionate about making more events for undocumented students and spreading information like that. I'm part of the, I'm part of a youth, the youth employment program at the Franklin Center. That's part of Parks and Recreation. And the Arts Alliance is, it's a group based off of youth and like gang prevention. So we go around Santa Barbara covering graffiti and vandalism. And we make really beautiful pieces of artworks. I mean, recently, the, the last one we finished was at Santa Barbara Junior High, where we painted like shoe mash people and tribe people. And it's, it's, when we paint murals, we try to make it so that it's representing us, you know, representing minorities and representing indigenous people and representing, you know, cultural people. And just being involved in all these things, I think I have a pretty good knowledge of like the community struggles, the community problems. And just, I think I can bring a more creative solutions, a more artistically inclined to think outside of the box. So if I'm appointed, I would love to talk a lot about mental health and spreading that information. Because I know, I have a lot of colleagues who don't even know we have an on-school counselor or like a therapist. And the people that have gone to them, like I know personally I have gone and I've been put on the waiting list. And when you're going through depression or when you're going through like mental illness, anxiety, or any other problems like that, you, it doesn't feel good to be put as, oh, you should wait, you know? And I know it's the school and they don't have a lot of resources. I don't know. But I want to be part of like making more programs. And if there are programs, I want to make sure that that information is spread, that a lot of people, a lot of students know that they have, you know, people who are there to support them. Also, again, I want to help with undocumented people, undocumented students especially, and spreading that information for them to know that they can go to college, that we can help them. And I want to make sure that everybody feels part of the community. And I think it's important for youth to have a voice, right? They create a link or a bridge for like their parents. Like if their parents are undocumented, they are the voices, like their parents rely on them so that they can have a voice in their community. I would like to thank you all for hearing me and just, you know-
You're welcome.
-being here.
You're welcome. Thanks so much, Ms. Sanchez. There's no lights, so good. You gave a good thorough presentation. Thank you. Please come on up. I see, I see youthful faces back there.
Hello. My name is Alex Chow and I'm a freshman at San Marcos High School. I'm applying for a position on the Santa Barbara Youth Council. I was previously a junior high representative for the Youth Council. I've been to many of the meetings for the Youth Council and contributed to many of their projects, such as the PSA for the new smoking rule. I feel it's important for teens to have a voice because we need to properly represent our generation. I can bring diversity and leadership to the Youth Council if I'm selected. I have a lot of experience with this program as I was a junior high representative. And I think that I am the most suitable to be selected. I've been interested in the Youth Council since I was in junior high. I've worked with the current student, I've been working with the current members of the Youth Council, as well as Susan Young and Roberta Payan. And so I feel like I have a lot of experience. I have a lot of ideas in my head, one of which is educating students when they're faced with a lockdown. Personally, I've been affected by threats of gun violence, as there were two lockdowns this year at San Marcos. A lot of the students, including myself, feel really conflicted as what to do, what actions to take during lockdown, if there was an active shooter on the campus. Right now, students are taught to hide in their classrooms, but we really wonder if that's the best option. Lockdowns have a huge physical and psychological impacts on students. And I feel that we shouldn't be afraid to attend school. I hope that you will consider me as my new member of the Youth Council. And thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Chow? Thanks. Thanks for serving as the junior high representative.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I see another young face. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, council members. My name is Joshua Frankenfield and I am a sophomore at Providence School. I'm honestly mad. I am mad, even though it may be hard to tell. I don't get mad often, but I'm kind of mad now. Never in a million years would I have thought that I would be applying for any kind of leadership position, however the situation in society is and requires good leaders. What makes a good leader? A leader needs to listen to those under them. A leader cannot lead through their own voice, but must instead also listen to the voices of others. This is why our government, for the most part, is stable and working. The school I attend and plan to attend for the rest of high school, Providence School, is directly next to the Boys and Girls Club, whose kids don't really get much of a voice. I'm in a position to make sure that changes are made to where those kids get a voice as well. Many people who, maybe someone who is going to look at things and see what's actually wrong could be a great leader. Our current leaders, especially in federal government, see a problem, but they don't see why. Instead, they try to fix the problem and they make things worse because they don't think things all the way through. I believe that the economic way of thinking is a great way to go about solving problems. Economic thinking is all about understanding the people. To quote Ender Wigan from Orson Scott Card's novel, Ender's Game, "I think it is impossible to really understand somebody, what they want, what they believe, and not love them the same way that they love themselves." Therefore, the economic way of thinking is connected to love, whether it be eros, filia, agapi, agape, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, storge. A good leader must love the people they're leading in one, if not multiple, of these ways. It helps figure out reasonable responses to other people's reactions to laws as well. If I am appointed, I intend to use this way of thinking in advising you guys in your decisions. A leader needs to be compassionate. Compassionate means suffering with. The way leaders throughout history have made things worse by causing the people to suffer the consequences without themselves suffering. This is the direct opposite of what a leader should be. A leader should be the first person to be willing to suffer the consequences of their actions and be a major part of the solution to problems they may or may not have caused. I am willing to accept the consequences of my actions and the consequences of the actions of the people around me as if they were my own. For these reasons, I have decided that I could not look onward at the government any longer. I am willing to take responsibility as a leader. I've decided to get a shot in being part in how things are run because there's no guarantee that other people will even try to act the way that they should. However, I can guarantee that I will try to act the way I should. And if I don't, I want somebody to let me know. We need good leaders who are willing to be upfront with their peers. To those of you applying and currently in parts of the Santa Barbara government, thank you for trying to make Santa Barbara better. And thank you for listening.
Very good. Thank you. I don't see any lights. So thank you so much for your presentation. Any other Youth Council applicants out there? We'll move on then to the Sign Committee? Single Family Design Board? Transportation and Circulation Committee? Oh, come on up. For which one?
Transportation. Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Andres Malivos, born and raised here in Santa Barbara. Interest in this is primarily in opportunity to learn. My first real kind of exposure to this was in college back in 2009. I was BA Political Science out of Cal State Long Beach. And I had a semester project with a teacher. And at the time, that city had made a proclamation that they wished to be the most bike-friendly city in the, in the country. And so they put an initiative out. And so my research project was to examine corollary and causal relationships between policy and reflections and whatever trends that we could derive from, from the research project that I was, I started. More recently, I've done some project management work out at UCSB, in which a good number of the instructors there had, you know, experience with the city and the county in civil works projects. And so this is kind of how I found the opportunity with the committee. But primarily, then also through the sport of cycling, I spent a good number of miles, 40, 50,000 miles cycling everywhere from the San Ynez Valley to Ventura. So I've got a good understanding of the network of roads and pathways and pinch points with traffic. And then always kind of had an interest between things like the electric bike share or the new bicycle master plan and had a good observational sense of that as a community member. So this is just kind of stepping forward with a interest to join.
Okay, very good. Ms. Sneddon has a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see that your second choice is Sign Committee. And if you wanted to add any remarks on that or-
Not so much now.
You didn't, you didn't mean to put Sign Committee on?
No, I did, but I was looking at the Times just with work and after speaking with-
Okay, so your very, very first choice is-
Absolutely.
-Circulation. Okay. Transportation. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Dominguez, go ahead.
I didn't understand what you said about the biking between San Ynez and Ventura.
Oh, it's just that I have experience with the roadways as a cyclist, as a hobbyist, as spent years racing on a bicycle. So just have probably 40,000 miles cycling between the San Ynez Valley to Ventura on our local roads.
Wow, so that's a lot of trips.
Yes.
I've done it a few times on bike, but mostly on motorcycles. So that's, what would be the first thing you'd change or what would you like to look at?
You know, just from my perspective, I think you guys are on a really good path, I think, with the, the opening of the bike lanes and the projects, especially with the bike share. I mean, I'm just constantly seeing an incremental drive towards a more bike-friendly city and then also other modes of transportation. So from my perspective, I think on the right trajectory, I would just like to learn more about it. And then really, through some education in the past, you learn just the depth of the waters of the policy that influences all these decisions. So from my perspective, just learning a greater perspective as to what goes into making all these and then the projects themselves.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for applying. So ma'am, you are here for Community Development and Human Services Committee? Would you be Ada Martinez? No. Sorry, I was just taking a guess. We have page two. Go ahead. What's your name?
Joanna Romo.
Oh, here you are. Okay, you're on page five for everybody. For everybody who's not confused, I am. Okay, Ms. Romo, welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. And my apologies for being out of order here. Had a little bit technical difficulty. My name is Joanna Roman. I'm currently a member on the Community Development and Human Services Committee. I am reapplying for this position since I have served as a Latino representative on the committee for over two years. Being part of this committee has provided me with knowledge of the various nonprofit organizations that help to serve our community and provide resources to individuals of all walks of life. As a member, my role is to work with members of the committee and advise city council on how the Community Development Block Grant and Human Services Fund should be allocated. During my tenure on the CDHS Committee, I have increased my awareness on the extent of nonprofits that exist in Santa Barbara. Knowing that there are numerous organizations that provide assistance, resources, and services to residents of Santa Barbara has, at times, made it challenging to decide what applicants are awarded funding for their programs. Thank goodness, it's not all up to me. The members on this committee all bring their own knowledge and provide interesting perspectives. They are all compassionate and empathetic individuals that carefully review each applicant's background and make decisions based on equity, finances, and scope of the services that they provide. I believe that we are all bringing a diverse perspective, which requires a commitment to be equitable and fair when making our decisions. For many years, I have worked in nonprofit in education to help youth and families have access to better living and education. The reason why I want to be a part of the Community Development and Human Services Committee is so I can devote my time to help my community and keep Santa Barbara being safe, diverse, and welcoming. My experience in working in nonprofit taught me that it is important to listen to the needs of the community and help develop strategies that will increase safety, wellness, and equity. I feel that it is even more important for me now to help families and individuals in my community feel safe and supported. I am highly motivated at helping to increase equity, wellness, and safety for citizens in the city of Santa Barbara. I would like to express to you that I am willing and committed to serve another term on this committee. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any lights. So thank you and thank you for serving in the past. Sir, I see you back there. Come on up and tell us what group you're trying to, you're applying for.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the city council. My name is Terrence Taylor and I'm applying for the Citizen Oversight Committee.
Give us one second. It's page three of our, Mr. Taylor, welcome.
Thank you. The reason I'm here is because we have two choices as citizens, to do something or to do nothing, and wait for someone else to do the job for us. And my belief is that as I drive through the cities of Santa Barbara, it's a beautiful city. And so my desire is to become involved. So I don't want to be a bystander anymore, but to make a contribution and being a part of the Citizen Oversight Committee. I have a background in banking, 25 years of it. And so I'm used to looking at lots of information and what I call it the big picture, and then finding a solution. So I'm always solution-driven, looking for the best possible outcome. And you're dealing with not only just income for individuals, but you're looking at also policies that you have to work with on a daily basis. And if anybody's ever done a mortgage, you can understand what the process could be like sometimes. So it is my desire to be involved in the committee and to make a difference. As I said, you have a choice. And my choice is to not just be a bystander. Do I have the time? Yes. Because again, when you make a decision, you're actually making a commitment. So you have to make people that are relying on you. And one thing that I pride myself on is being very reliable. I'm well-respected within the community and my company that I work for. And what can I bring to the committee? I bring a foundation of knowledge and understanding and an appreciation for opinions. I appreciate diversity and I understand what we all may be encountering on a daily basis. So you never take anything for granted. And that's what I've learned in my profession, is to always be aware, be cognitive of what you can do to help someone else. And so I actually feel it's my duty to become a part of the Citizen Oversight Committee. And that is my desire.
Right. Thanks so much. I don't, Ms. Sneddon, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a question I asked the previous applicant. So I feel I should ask- It's a question I asked the previous applicant, so I feel I should ask the same as, what do you see as the goal of the board and what do you see as its biggest challenge?
Well, I'm also here, part of what I need to do is learn about the board. I think the goal of the board is to use the fundings and how we adequately use funds for the Measure C. And so that's per my research, but there's a lot more to learn. And so since I'm the newcomer on the block, I know I need to spend additional time to get on the upload of it and understand and become a figure in, you know, being able to be very firm in my answers for that. But I learn very quickly.
Thanks so much, Mr. Taylor. I don't see any, thank you.
Thank you.
See anybody else, so we'll go ahead and close this item and we were adjourning to when, Mr. Casey?
Tuesday.
So we don't have a city council meeting on Tuesday?
Correct. We do not. The Tuesday council meeting was canceled due to the holiday weekend, but then we have a budget work session with Public Works Wednesday afternoon at 2:30 here at City Hall.
Okay. Thank you for that. Meeting adjourned.